Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And we'll start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, I will move to the next agenda item, which is any amendments, David?
No amendments.
All right. And I know our student representative was not able to make it to tonight's meeting, but do we have announcements?
You do, and you have them, I think, by your place. A couple of quick things I'll just hit on, I won't read it exactly as is, but we had a, our annual Veterans Day was on November 10th at the high school. If you do go to our website, you'll notice that we've also, are scrolling some pictures of some of our attendees, some of our veterans that were there. It was a nice opportunity and a slideshow that was put on by some of our big picture students, particularly telling the stories, interviews with some of our veterans, which was provided, so that was well received. Food drive, which will culminate on an assembly on the, with 246 pounds that were collected. This is at Chamberlain Orchard School. It's got its annual book night on Thursday, the 16th, coming right up. A community-wide movie night, November 11th, occurred. Fred Tuttle, after-school clubs are all gearing up. This is again our typical Bolton Ski and Ride program, and many of the other activities are going on. We have the South Burlington High School Music Musical, the Adam Sandler will be performing Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and if board members are interested in going, you can certainly let us know, we can work to get you tickets for that. And a special note of appreciation and congratulations to our ITE, Lauren Perrin. She received the Frank Watson Outstanding Technology Educator Award. Some other upcoming things happening on the date side is the 20th and 21st of next week are conferences. And we are off then the 23rd through the 25th for Thanksgiving vacation, and December 15th, going out there a little bit farther on you, but is the Chamberlain Winter Sing-Along at 1:30. In addition, also was informed yesterday, or maybe today, about, as you know, we are partnered with the city of South Burlington on our solar array that's on the landfill. This was a project that was done, and so this is kind of the ribbon-cutting. It has been in production, i.e. making electricity, but this is a ribbon-cutting activity. It's going to be tomorrow at 1 o'clock, and it's actually going to be at the airport parkway. I don't exactly know that, the location, but it says you can enter from the airport parkway entrance near the end of the airport runway, and the entrance to the wastewater treatment plant and CSWD Environmental Depot, if some of you are interested in going there. I'm gonna, I've tried to rearrange my schedule so I can be there, but just wanted to let you know, and it will likely be some folks around from the press that will want to capture that. And that's all I have. We have a lot of other things going on, culminating activities in sports and clubs that happened, you know, towards the end of the last couple of weeks, so.
Lots of championships.
Yeah, we've had a couple, yeah, we've had a couple of those, yeah. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Any other announcements from the board? I know several board members have been approached by, we have a student at the high school doing a project on the proposed state legislation on, relative to collective bargaining, on eliminating imposition and strikes, Amelia Charbonneau. So I met with her this past week, and I think some of you are responding and writing, and I think.
I met with her this morning.
You did. And I think her project has been accepted at a social studies forum, which will be at the Hilton in December, I believe. So if we can get additional information on that, that would be great to be able to participate if we can. All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is city-school collaboration.
I could have put the, under the announcements, I could have put the press conference, the city-school thing, but that's clearly, that's probably one of the items that I can report on. Elizabeth and I have, we had a meeting planned last Friday, but that was canceled with Helen and Kevin, and I don't exactly know the next one. I think it's the following Friday.
I think the last of November, yeah.
Yeah. So I don't have anything particularly to report. There's been a lot of conversation around some of the activity associated with our budget cycle and legislative breakfast, but we've formalized nothing at the present time. I don't know if there's any particular questions related to city-school collaboration that any of you have, but.
I guess a question I've just heard a lot, and I guess the question for me too, is where we stand with the LOI that we had discussed earlier. It seems to have just gone quiet from the city's end, and there's a lot of confusion about that because the city continues to talk about the library and the new city hall and all of that, so it's just curious where we stand with the LOI.
So the LOI is the letter of intent, and for those people who aren't aware of it, on Market Street, there currently is some construction going on just to the south of our school, Rick Marcock property. The LOI was initially formed for a potential building, city building and a library that was going to be directly east of that new property, and also a little bit north, and the proposed northern building was going to be a recreation facility, which is what required the LOI because it dipped into a portion of our property. And so the letter of intent was to really look at how we could collaborate on that particular piece. What we understand currently is that that particular plan on the recreation side of the building, or the recreational building that would punch to the north, is not part of the plan currently, and therefore the LOI was not needed. We were also under the impression initially, again Elizabeth and I, around a potential bonding that would go before the electorate in the March timeframe, and we've currently heard as well, I have actually, not so much Elizabeth, that that's currently off the table in March. So there'll be no ballot specific to the, to the new city slash library space that would go before the voters in March. Again, that's, that's what I'm hearing. That was, that's probably a week, week or so old, yeah.
Yeah, and specific to the LOI, Bridgette, that's also what I heard at the last meeting with Kevin and Helen, which is that the rec center of that footprint was being excluded at this time, so the LOI was on hold indefinitely. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So what I have for you tonight is just an update on the library. At some point in time, along with the high school administration, we'll come back to you with a particular, a mapping out of what the space will look like. And again, I think, right out of the gate, it's important to note that we have for a long time co-used the space, you know? The same foot traffic passes over the same spaces, so when somebody vacates spaces like that, it's not necessarily that you capture, you know, double the space. Certainly, the children's room is a space that typically our students aren't going in, so that will be some recaptured space, or square footage, I should say. A few things I just want to highlight out of the move. Currently, the library, the community library is now shut off, so there's no current traffic from the city, community library folks, it's not accessible to them anymore. And this is in part to help them allow the time to make the move for a December, early December startup. I don't have that exact date. A few things that we're working hard with the city library folks, again, as on the various things that are theirs and ours, and how we'll then, what are vacated for materials, how we'll fill up, and how we'll rearrange kind of the library based on that planning. So there's, there's a fair amount of conversation that's been going on, and that's all been very positive, so again, I want to be real clear about that. Patrick and his team have done, have put some things in place as a result of now, we don't have a person at the entrance of the high school or into the library for security purposes. And again, that was set up because if a community member wanted to leave into the school, we required them to have to sign in and understand what they were doing, and in most cases, they weren't permitted to go into the, into the school unless had a particular reason. Around the time that was shut off, they went to this library track, so that currently students now have to just sign in where they're coming from, and so begin to get a little bit of some foot traffic specific to what's happening in the library as they look to address that. So this, the graph, although I know it's probably hard to read, gives you a little bit about the number of students that are visiting, and a little bit more information on that. Towards the bottom of that, again, kind of repetitive here, talk about moving of some of the shelves and chairs and adding some of those types of furniture changes to make it more accessible. I think one of the, one of the bigger parts here is that towards the end, we did, we did not however, include staffing for evening hours. And, you know, the community library has always been a great asset to us because, as you know, our island students, we have two activity buses that go out and leave at 6 o'clock at night. This allows for our students from the islands to participate in clubs and activities. If they had an early practice and needed to wait, then the community library was always a nice resource for them. We didn't plan on that not being available, and it would impact the opportunities for kids, so currently we're, we're going to add some, some hours to make that happen. As you know, the shoring up of the, of the cost, it was clear with Tom and Kevin that, you know, we're going to have to see how things kind of unfold, and we'll talk about it as the year comes to an end on, on what we do. But these types of things, I think, would be included in the conversation with them when we approach that. So let me pause, I don't know if other people have questions specific to the community library?
Just a quick one here, David, on your last comment. When you're considering proposed changes for that space, are you exclusively, exclusively leaving that up to the librarian, or is there a broader group looking at utilization of the space?
There is a broader group. Patrick and the administrative group, along with teachers, are part of that conversation. The library, the library of the past, the library of today, and some of the newer ideas, particularly somewhat connected to master planning and visioning and how you would use that space, there's a lot of good dialogue going on there. So that will continue. And as I said in the end, it's, also will be included if we need to into our 18, 19 budget.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8, the Winuski School District Transportation Bid Proposal. I see some esteemed Winuski colleagues in the audience. Welcome.
Yeah, it's actually nice to have from here, so let me just open this up and then make sure you have the opportunity to ask me questions. But, you know, certainly within the Champlain Valley, and certainly within Chittenden County, there's been pretty considerable work to talk about how we can utilize some of our services and be more collaborative. This is a conversation that, ever since Sean has been in Winuski, and me, and South Burlington, and perhaps even before, but we certainly think that there's opportunities. This is an opportunity, I think, for those of you who don't know where our buses park, on Patchen Road. If you were to draw a straight, or actually to travel the roads, the shortest distance to a school would likely be to Winuski from, from our bus garage, so it's a very, very in close proximity. The request that Winuski, Winuski School District put out a bid for transportation services, and they specifically are looking for assistance January through March, primarily to help with students getting during the winter months. And again, I think if questions come up, certainly the folks from Winuski can, can respond to that. But they have had, they're really wanting to make sure that students can, can get to school and not be truant or tardy, and can get to school particularly during those winter months. So we did respond to the bid. We were, what Sean informed me of, we were the only responders. And so our bid currently at $61,557 is, is currently in play. Winuski accepted our bid contingent upon the Agency of Education waiver because there was only one bid and they're, they would need to do that, so if the board was to make an action accepting it, they would need to be contingent upon AOE getting that, or having that approved. As I said, our bus garages are very close, this would be two buses. And again, there may be tweaks as we begin to roll this out, but our, our thinking on this would be two buses, and they would generally would do two loops, starting perhaps at like 7:10 in the morning, pretty clustered oriented pickups, bringing the students to school, coming right back and doing it again. So it would be four trips with two buses. As you know, we're, we're, we're a school district that has tried to be really mindful to their, to the life of our buses. I think that's an opportunity to provide a service to Winuski, and it's an opportunity for us to continue to upgrade our fleet as well. These buses would be able to be used in the afternoon. As you know, we have a lot of trips that go out. There's an opportunity here. And I, I would say probably the largest, it's, it's wonderful to be able to do something to a neighboring school district, and I think it also shows genuine support for collaboration and, and opportunities to enhance these types of services in close proximity. So, I don't know, let me just pause there for a second, if that's all right. I don't know, Sean or Mike, wanted to add anything else that maybe I've left off?
Yeah, I think just mostly for context, I think, you mentioned that this, we went out, and you guys were the only ones that bid this. This is the second time we've been out. We went out the first time, and we got a bid from La Moyle, which was out of the range that we had budgeted for the first pass. We hadn't finished contract negotiations, so we had a lot of question marks inside the budget.
We decided after we got done with all the negotiations, closure, and everything on that end, to go back out again, and you guys were the, the ones that came back with the bid in the second time, so it wasn't the first pass. This is a morning only. This isn't morning and afternoon, so it would be, it would be in the morning to get the kids to school. That seems to be the biggest concern, obviously. The getting them to school piece is, is our biggest concern. Getting them home, we have a little more time. So to save the tardies and the absences on, on the very cold days, it really is, I think, January 16th to the end of March at this point, just to get a sense of ridership, usership, attendance improvement compared to what we've got now. Obviously, that's tied to reading, math, everything. You can't learn if you're not in school, so we're trying to get this one subset. It is not a citywide transport, it's like David said, it is a very specific pickup in a couple of very specific locations to impact the maximum number of children that we can in the, in the smallest space possible. The parent group as well has, has signed up to get help riding the buses, ensuring that the, the, you know, it's under control on the bus, so we, we hopefully don't anticipate any issues outside of the norm while riding a bus, I'll, I'll put it that way. So, I don't know if I hit everything for context or background.
Yeah, no, I think you hit, Sean McMahon is the superintendent of Winuski School District. I think you hit most of it. We've been going at this process for close to two and a half years now, working with a community organizing group called Parents Amused for Change, who have really reached out into the community and worked with many of our parents, and have had community forums, have looked at attendance data, have worked with the city around the maintenance of the sidewalks during the wintertime, and that's why the two issues of safety and attendance are our primary goals, because we do have quite a few times during the winter where the targeted audience of this down off of Mallett's Bay, where we have a very high percentage of our students live, the furthest spot from the school and the city practically. And depending on the weather conditions, we do oftentimes have kids walking in the streets because the sidewalks are not clear, which creates all kinds of safety hazards, obviously. And it creates attendance issues, because sometimes kids will not come to school on those days because they have to walk that far in the snow, and their parents decide that it's not safe. So we're very excited at the prospect of being able to do this, and as Mike said, we were unable to do the full 60-day pilot that we had hoped to do, which was to start after Thanksgiving and then run through the end of March. So that would be our year-two goal, provided that this goes well in the first year. And you covered the bid waiver, David.
Sean, when do you think AOE, do you have any idea on when the AOE waiver might come through?
I would suspect we would get it early next week, yeah.
The other piece is, we did work with CCTA as well to see if there was anything we could do with their routes, reverse them, move them around, change times, but it just didn't work out in their grand schedule across the board, so we appreciate your consideration.
So, David, from a, from a South Burlington standpoint, I assume the bid is at a minimum break-even in terms of the investment, and then is, is this using existing equipment or is this new, new equipment?
Well, I mean, I think that's in part in play, you know, to the, to our fleet. Currently, our fleet, you know, as, as you know, we keep our buses no more than 10 years, and most, a lot of our buses are in that five years or newer. Obviously, with the resources that would come with us, we would be able to, again, be part of our, our purchasing power of busing. So we currently have the buses, but it's currently, we're in the queue for, for some new buses as well. John did, you know, kind of the financial analysis for us, and again, we were trying to be, you know, mindful to support the service and also mindful to the South Burlington taxpayers, so we, we think that we've, we've hit it right. And, you know, I think as Sean said, you know, we'll have to see how it goes, and there'll maybe be some additional tweaking that comes in, in year two if, if, if they're happy to do that. I do like this also because, you know, we, we have a lot, particularly different times of the year, we're able to do morning, morning routes, but then we really tack on a lot of hours to some of our drivers for trip driving. So there is an opportunity here to diversify our fleet, so you don't have to be an AM, PM, high-middle, and elementary driver, and then have trips which push us into overtime. It gives us a nice opportunity to differentiate a little bit, to be probably Winuski drivers and then trip drivers, to include vocational, and then it keeps us within kind of the check for the right number of hours and consistent drivers, because again, I think that's a big part of what we know of, you know, creating relationships with students that ride the bus, you know, we're really, that's big for us around that. We would want to do the same for them. So it's certainly, the financial component, we think, is good. John, I don't know if you want to add anything on the kind of assessing of that?
I would love to do this with the, with the buses we currently have, but this anticipates us buying two new, two, two used buses and leasing them over a three-year period. And it is pretty much covering our cost proposal. You would have the side advantage that David alerted, alluded to about the buses, the drivers could be used in the afternoon or evenings for extracurricular activities, but this, this is the first time, I think, I've ever responded to this kind of a bid. I'm usually issuing these bids, so I've never been in the business of selling bus services, but this, this is an exciting thing to try to do, I think. So I think it's worth giving it a shot.
And the other thing, and I've talked to Sean about this, is that, you know, there's opportunities maybe for, we're always looking for either sub-drivers or additional drivers. Right now, we're in pretty good shape, but, you know, that can quickly change, and so there may be opportunities for employees that are currently at Winuski, either part-time or, or not working at all, that could, could factor into this as well, that could help us and could help them as well. So that's, that's an opportunity. Sean?
I think one of the exciting parts of, while I'm really excited about the transportation piece, I think what David said at the very beginning is also a really key piece here, which is the idea that we're starting to do some, some inter-district collaboration. And, you know, I think there has been some of that in the past. There used to be the consortium of classes in the evenings for high school students, and I think just because of all of the pressures on school districts, on boards, on superintendents and organizations in the last seven, eight years, we've gotten away from that. And I think if we were able to do this, it would be a great example for David and I, who co-chair our regional superintendent's group, to go back and say, "Look at what we were able to do together, what are other areas now that we can start to look to collaborate to, such as ELL and special education and other things?"
Other questions from the board? Alex?
Yeah, so are these Winuski School District employees going to be driving the bus?
Not necessarily, no.
They would probably be our employees.
They would be our employees.
Probably ours.
I'm just simply saying that it could be a draw from Winuski to get some additional drivers from Winuski that might then drive, but they would be our employees driving our buses, is what we're thinking. Again, the, the cost includes us paying the driver, they're paying for the service. I'm just simply talking about recruitment opportunities to expand what we do as well as making some nice connections with the Winuski community as well. And I, I don't, actually, I could be remiss because we could have some Winuski community members currently driving. I don't necessarily know where all of our 30 drivers are currently coming.
Oh, well, where they're, where they're employed is, was my question. I mean, if you're.
Would be with us.
Excuse me?
Would be with us.
Okay, that was my question. They're all employed by us. So we're basically getting into the business of bus driving, not just for ourselves.
Well, we're already in it.
We're in it.
We're in it already. I mean, if you haven't been to our bus garage on Patchen Road, you know, all of our 30 buses are parked there, and, you know, all of the maintenance is performed there. We have a full-ten mechanic, we have backup services through the city. We use, and this has been a longstanding, actually, we were the original owners of the facility for, for maintenance, actually, through DPW, and that's currently, you know, converted over with Sunny Adet Building where the maintenance is performed. And so there's good collaboration there too, between the city and the district around the maintenance of, of our buses.
I kind of look at it, Alex, as we're expanding our service geography by one square mile.
Yeah.
I have to say, I was just surprised to see this because my understanding is that we've always had trouble recruiting, you know, bus drivers, that it's been a weakness for us, that we've had challenges with our transportation. So I was kind of surprised to see this in the packet as something that we were sort of getting into, you know, sort of serving other communities when we seem to struggle a little bit to serve the students of South Burlington.
Well, part of that struggle, you know, has been connected back to kind of where we are with salary and ratios, you know, related to that. And so, you know, with Karen on board, we've done a lot more on kind of the market assessment of where we are. We are a district that pays benefits, but sometimes the hourly wage is sometimes far more attractive for some than others, so we've done a little bit more communication with people around what we offer versus what others offer. And I'm not saying that that shouldn't continue, and we, you know, it's a supply and demand issue, and we've, we have adjusted some of those salaries to make them more competitive, and also worked hard to, to do the recruiting. And so currently, we're, we're in good shape. We do have, we've added some sub-drivers because at certain times, we, you know, have some people that are out, and we've kind of figured out what is the right mix. I'd love to say we'll never have that problem, but that's part of the business that we're in for the, you know, the 2,500 students that we currently have responsibility to transport. Again, this is a morning only. Again, most of you know this, I'm sorry to be repetitive, but we run AM, we run elementary, so we run our, our elementary run, then we run our high-middle run, right? So we pick up all the elementary, then we go back and we pick up all the high-middle, and we do the same thing on the other end, plus we do the activity buses. So we blanket the city quite a bit, plus we have the vocational, technical runs, which are, as you know, you go to Essex, to get to Essex, you can go through Winuski to get to Essex, which is in also close proximity to, to Winuski schools. Again, this is, we're talking about two buses, we're talking about in the morning, and we think it's a very doable situation.
Steve?
Yeah, my day job requires that I ask all the gloomy questions. I see that, you know, John didn't track down from your insurance carrier, is this, is this Vizbit?
Right, Vermont School Board's insurance.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, so I'm assuming Winuski uses Vizbit, we use Vizbit, but how, I mean, let's just say the worst thing happens and there is a major accident, there are injuries, maybe fatalities, how is a situation where a South Burlington bus is carrying Winuski students going to differ from carrying our own students in terms of our liability or potential liability? Have we worked out any indemnification with the Winuski School District? I mean, that's just, you know, I philosophically completely agree with everything you're trying to do here, but in just thinking of the worst-case scenario, I really think we need to better understand what our exposure is.
Well, certainly, you know, Vizbit is the right place to go, and, you know, the letter is included, as you, as you referenced there. Typically, and again, we can ask some additional questions, but typically, Vermont School Board's. Typically, and again, we can ask some additional questions, but typically Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust will come back to you and say that, you know, this is normal and customary, that we transport students on buses. As you know, we are moving a lot of kids and in some cases, we move, you know, back and forth to the technical programs. We've asked in the past whether if we're going to transport some additional students, other athletes to other locations, we've always been covered. I think that, you know, I think we're well-positioned and covered appropriately by Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust. I think that the agreement that we have squarely puts it, you know, in the right place and that we've been transparent with Vermont, with Visbit. I think we're in good shape. It's an awful thing to think about, but there are Vermont students in Vermont public schools and I can't, I can't believe that we would be in any sort of illegal jeopardy.
This is where, you know, I'd ask general counsel and say, you know, if we were to get, if we were to enumerate sort of specific questions, I mean, I think, you know, this gets to the basics, but now that we actually are contemplating executing an agreement, I'm almost thinking like a memo from, you know, kind of a formal memorandum from Visbit that says, you know, yes, you are covered, the Winuski students riding your buses are covered, you know, it's two buses, it's approximately this number of students, should something happen, the Winuski students riding your buses are covered identically, you know, in any extenuating circumstances, they're covered identically to how they would be for South Burlington students. Just having that additional measure of protection so that we don't find ourselves in a circumstance where...
I can't speak for Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust or Tim Vincent, but I think that's certainly something we could ask. We do have, if it was approved contingent above a memo, contingent above the AOE waiver that Winuski referenced earlier, then...
And what is that? I'm sorry, I did hear the reference and I didn't catch what that was referring to.
Yeah, so, go ahead, Sean.
So, that's in reference to a bid waiver. So, whenever you're going out above $15,000, you're required to put a request for proposal out and follow all the timelines. And then, if you get less than the minimum required by state statute of three bids, then you have to petition the state for a waiver.
Okay.
It's a contractual policy.
It's a pretty standard.
We don't, I mean, we don't see that that's, it's really a formality that has to occur. But certainly regarding the memo clarity from Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust, I think that we could certainly ask for that to be done.
Questions?
I'm a little unsure and concerned about the speculative risk we're assuming regarding the price of diesel fuel. Here it says 2.069 per gallon. If that's the price, okay, but what if some, something happens elsewhere on the globe, maybe in the Middle East, I don't know, and the price goes way up? Or let's say the price just goes way up just because. Would South Burlington be holding the bag or at least liable to pay for a much higher price of diesel fuel? And yet, still, we would have this set cost of 61,557 for this agreement?
I think that the $5,000 allowance for diesel I put in here is plenty liberal. Don't tell the folks from Winuski, but I don't think we're going to spend anywhere near that on diesel.
Or Alex, I'm sorry, just to quantify, you know, if the price doubles, so that means we'll be over by about $5,000. I mean, that's, it's not great, but...
I think the real cost of diesel for this kind of a program is about $1,000. I mean, it's 36 days, it's like round trips of about a mile and a half.
Do you always pad the budget like that?
Only for other school districts.
Well, part of that, but part of that is exactly...
Rewind that part of the tape.
But I think fundamentally, what's important here is that, you know, they're in the same business we are. And if it was reversed and there were situations where there were cost increases that were triple, you know, or more, we, I think, would go back and say, hey, you know, we need to reevaluate this. And likely, we're all in it together. I mean, again, as you know how public education is funded, which we all do, it hits us all. But we certainly would go back and say, hey, there's been a huge increase here and can we talk about, you know, some sort of an agreement where we could do that? Again, I think, again, we've put out a bid that we think is solid, you know, and has some flexibility for us because, you know, we're agreeing that we're going to have good buses and drivers and things. So, there is some leeway in here, but I think, you know, they're down the road and we have a good relationship with them and I think, I think that certainly allows for the kind of the fuel kind of concerns or those types of questions.
Well, I'm also, I'm looking at it as, I mean, this is a pilot at this point with a time limit to it. And the real, the real exposure, if everything fell apart, is that, you know, South Burlington will have invested in two new buses that we ultimately would have to invest in regardless.
We're planning to buy two this year anyway, so maybe if this fell apart, we would not buy them.
Well, and if really everything completely fell apart, you could sell them again, you know, I mean, yeah.
But I think, you know, again, for me, you know, obviously, you pay us to be in the education business, right? And our sticking to our knitting is about what we do in the classrooms. But as Sean said, getting our kids to the classrooms, their day starts and ends with a bus ride for most of our kids. And it's a very important part of the connection to the educational environment. And certainly, when you look at correlations to outcomes for students and absenteeism or tardiness, it's a big, big piece. So, I mean, I know, this is outside of our main work, but it's a big, it's a big part of our work too.
And I will say, you know, what I find most interesting about this opportunity is really what Sean, you and David have already articulated, which is, I, you know, again, from a, the primary expense within any school district is really wages and benefits of staff. So, it really leaves that 20% of any school district's budget to leverage efficiencies outside of staffing. And, you know, in my 12 years on the board, I've struggled with the fact that with the close proximity of Chittenden County schools, that's been really a difficult process to leverage, you know, purchasing, back office operations, HR, and a number of different areas. And transportation would be one of those. It's a drop in the bucket, but I feel like it's directionally something that might signal to the state some support for innovative programs like this that not only improve student outcomes, but might drive some efficiencies where districts, you know, can support one another's based on their operational strengths. So, that's, that's a little bit of my orientation.
Yep, agreed.
Any other questions from the board? Questions from the public? Dan?
Yeah, Dan Fleming, I've been here for a while, but great to be back. Look, I think this is a wonderful thing, the whole idea of initiating some collaborative efforts, sounds wonderful to me. I'm very glad that Steve brought up the point about liability and I hope you'll responsibly deal with that, that could be a major issue. But I have two other things I'd like to discuss. One is, does the district see any benefit to it? I can see the benefit to Winuski. What's the benefit to South Burlington? Number one. And number two is, do we have any issues in transportation at the present time that would in some way be compromised by such an agreement? Our ability to respond to it?
Say that last one again, Dan.
Do we have any current issues within the district?
To transportation?
Short of dealing with anything else beyond that related to transportation, that this could be viewed by the public, for example, as compromising our ability to deal with that issue?
So, I would say that first is really, I think what's already been said is it's a beginning to work in a much more collaborative way.
I guess...
Hands down.
I'm 133% behind that, I think.
So, those opportunities...
If that can go further, that'd be better. My concern only is that from a public perception standpoint, are we giving away something that the public will view as something we should have used as our own resources to deal with a problem that we have? I don't know of any such problems, I just want to make sure there aren't any.
I was just trying to get back to Dan, you were talking about the benefits, have you thought about that?
Oh, you're back to benefits, fine, I'm sorry.
So, I just wanted to be clear about what I thought the benefits were, are certainly opening up the door to those opportunities, far beyond just transportation. But as earlier stated, it could be a variety of other related services, back office work, you know, types of things that by scale, we could begin to think about and how to do it.
That's a future possibility.
That's right.
I'm looking for something associated with this particular transaction.
Right, so this particular...
Is it anything, that's okay, I just want to know that.
I think this particular transaction begins that and demonstrates more collaboration than we've had before.
I sure hope so.
Right? That's, again, that's on the benefit and I think there's, we don't know about all the others, but again, as you heard Sean also talk about, we hope that this will trigger some added conversation, certainly amongst our peer group up and down the Champlain Valley. As far as the issues, I think any employment, we have, we do have issues at times, one of which was alluded to earlier about just kind of appropriate pay and recruitment. We've gone through some ups and downs around that. We're currently in good shape. We typically, as a district, when we have activities that are calling for farther-away trips or in the championships, it challenged sometimes our transportation services, but we've also looked upon that as how can we appropriately problem-solve? Some might see those as issues, I see those as opportunities to grow and problem-solve. I don't think currently there's any particular terrible concern about what we offer. I think we're pretty consistent. Our current drivers drive pretty much the same route, day in and day out. You know, from the end of last year, the Jeff Spengler conversation, you know, the students, you know, love their bus driver and make those great connections is alive and well. So, I don't, I don't believe there's issues out there that people would see that we're going to diminish what we currently provide as a result of this extension, this small extension. I don't see any particular issue there. And in some ways, I think that might help us, particularly with Winuski maybe saying, hey, you know, you do a little bit for us in and after school, you know, Winuski's going to help us to say, hey, there's some opportunities there for you, would you be interested in driving? And I think they're going to have a little more talk, you know, specifics to those opportunities. We do advertise, but it's nice then to have somebody who might say, hey, there's another opportunity for you, you're part of our after-school program, you can do some driving in the morning or a variety of things. Again, that said, they have to all go through the licensing, commercial driver's license requirements and all the drug and alcohol requirements, so there would be no compromising of any of that. I don't, I don't see any glaring issue. This is not like we're adding, you know, 25 additional drivers and trying to do a very complicated route, as Sean indicated and Mike did as well. We're talking about only a couple pickups. And again, we're going to assess that because if there's hundreds getting, or, that's not right, if there's 30 getting on at one spot and we could do two at 15, then I think we should talk about the two at 15 maybe. But we're going to, we're going to work with them on that. But ideally, it was, the way we understand it's pretty, pretty cluster-oriented and, you know, I think, I think it's very workable.
I just want to say that I see a benefit to this where we're going to add two buses to our fleet that are going to be used by another entity for 36 mornings in the wintertime, but for the rest of the school year, night, day and evening, those are our buses to use as we want. And there are times when we're short, where we have trouble getting the extracurricular trips out, and this will help us meet those times of shortage. At the same time, another school district is going to be paying, you know, for that addition to our fleet. I think that's a huge benefit to us.
Yeah, it's, again, it's a beginning and, you know, I'm excited about it for our collaboration now and also future collaboration.
Question. Is there any timeliness? What's the timeliness issue in doing this?
I would like, I would like to get going on acquiring two more buses. I was hoping tomorrow to issue a request for proposal to see, you know, to get these in the pipeline.
This is worn for action tonight.
Correct, it is.
It would normally take, to get a new bus would take six to eight months. To get a used bus, I think I can get one quicker, but I'd like to get going on that. We're supposed to have this in place for January 15th, which gives us two months to get the buses and get them all set.
And this is not atypical for us. I mean, most of our purchasing happened in, you know, the summer months, but we've also done it during this time of the year too. And the mechanic that we have is, you know, has very specific desires and wants around what we currently have in our fleet and has collaborated on make, models, et cetera.
So, we can't wait three weeks?
No. Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess I'd just say, you know, I would, I mean, this is, I think $60,000 or thereabouts is at a low enough threshold that that in and of itself is, you know, not something I'd want some notice on. But I think the principle, and again, particularly just the, making sure that the catastrophic coverage is in place, I think we deserve a little bit more time to think about this. And, you know, I actually kind of echo Alex's concern. I don't know if it would be possible to keep the ball rolling, but, I mean, again, another possibility is approve contingent upon documentation from this, because that's really, I think that's the only, if I really were to look at it, that would be my only concern, is to make sure we're absolutely covered to the extent that we can be. And I think in a sentence, Winuski students have exactly the same coverage that South Burlington's, or rather, our ability to cover anything that happens to the Winuski students is identical by virtue of our Visbit coverage to what would happen to a South Burlington student. I think with that documentation, I'm comfortable.
I think I've heard two contingencies that would have to be attached to any motion this evening, which are, one, the AOE waiver, and then the clarity on the insurance liability.
From Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust.
Yeah, but I think, I'd just, you know, say it flatly, I think for something unusual like this, I'd prefer to have it presented at one meeting, fraction at a subsequent meeting. Because I just, I can, I can tell we're still trying to digest this, we don't want to hold things up, but, you know, a couple of us probably would have preferred at least two meetings to think about it, so.
Yeah, and again, I can speak a little bit to that timeline. I mean, part of that was, you know, as you heard, this is not the first go-round for them. And obviously, you know, I've been in collaboration with Sean and then obviously working with my folks. So, you know, putting it together and getting it before you, obviously, you know, there was a pretty tight timeline to do that. And I think, you know, my desire was to not delay in being able to effectively get this going for planning as well as for the equipment that purchased. So, that's, you know, and as you all know, you know, I don't, we don't get a lot of time, well, actually, that's true too. We do have a lot of time together, but maybe more in the past, but our board meetings typically are every couple of weeks and, you know, we're about to enter into a kind of a difficult period of time, but...
Well, I think Steve's feedback though is fair, that this is kind of a real-time assessment. I know you were operating on providing this bid contingent on board approval at this meeting and we just, this is the discussion we're having.
Sure. I mean, if it's, again, the will of the board, if you, if somebody calls it for action, you know, we certainly can, if it's then-you're-so choice, you put it on the December 6th. I think you've heard a little bit of some of the pushes that are going to then start to happen, but again, that's within your purview.
Yep.
Yeah, see, most of my questions, I think, have been answered and, you know, with the contingencies, I think I would be comfortable moving ahead. I just sort of echo what Steve said, you know, if the bid was due on November 6th, we had a board meeting on November 1st, you know, a discussion of it could have probably happened at that board meeting without any action, you know, just so that we were aware and had time to ask questions, you know, in the interim. It does just feel like, you know, we kind of opened our board packets to prepare for this meeting and we were kind of expected to take all this in at once and move forward with it. So, just on other things, it would just be helpful if, you know, even if they're not fully formulated, it would just be nice to know that they're coming down the pipe for action the next time. Because it wasn't, at the last meeting, it wasn't on the discussion of what was going to be on the agenda even, so.
So, I would, and I would add to, this isn't so much a contingency on specific board action, but I think because this is presented as a pilot, that... action, but I think because this is presented as a pilot, that as with any pilot, you know, I would have an expectation there'd be an assessment of the cost and benefit to South Burlington at the conclusion of the pilot as well. And hopefully, we hear from Winuski as well. So I'm going to make an effort to frame a motion, but I will look for someone to make that and second it, if it's coming. So the motion would be to approve the Winuski School District Transportation Bid Proposal Contingent on AOE Waiver and Clarity on Insurance Liability.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote, any, all vote aye? Any abstentions or against?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm voting no. I mean, I'm not sorry, never mind.
Okay, and with three, the motion passes.
I think it passed. I mean, friendly amendment is, I think, documentation from visbit unequivocally stating that the Winuski students are covered identically to South Burlington students.
So David and John, are you clear on those?
Yes, both.
Okay. And Delina, you have the phrasing on that. All right. We look forward to-
Thank you, guys, for coming.
-working with you.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 9, the FY 2019 Budget.
So let me, let me just go a quick start, and then, there's a lot going on, on the, on the budget front, and I do have, I know I forwarded to you folks the governor's letter that came out today. I do have hard copies for you, if you'd like to take one.
No, the electronic copy was sobering enough.
Thank you, Steve, for also forwarding, although I had forwarded probably almost at the same time.
We're ahead of me by 10 minutes, yeah.
But I do appreciate you keeping us in the loop if you have information that's informative. So with that said, we're kind of in this ongoing gathering of information related to the budget. As you all know, you know, there's a lot we don't yet have. We have submitted our, our student census data. You know, we are hopeful that that will come back on time with a equalized pupil amount. That happens somewhere around that mid-December, likely maybe later. The property yield, as you know, we looked at this last time. John made some estimates based on what the direction was around the 8-cent recapture. You're aware of the healthcare conditions currently, that what has been determined is the clawback. Also, you recognize that we have some efficiencies in healthcare as well. And you certainly, at least will understand tonight that we've got some other parameters, obviously from the governor's recommendation, to really be mindful of that, Rebecca Holcomb's letter on the, on the ratios attention. So again, I'm just a broad brush of some of the, the things that we're trying to, to deal with. That said, we have an obligation to try to move along the budget process that continues to keep the opportunities appropriate for, for students in South Burlington. We are in the very beginning process of meeting with administrators, but as you can imagine, it's pretty, I don't have, I don't have a lot that I can go with, to them right now. I mean, I don't really want to go down the significant advancement of opportunities. It is really looking at kind of a zero-base kind of approach, what you currently have with, with staffing. How would you be doing that different? How would we perhaps reallocate some of those resources in a different way, with a little bit of this backdrop being kind of the, the kind of volume of information that we're getting around where we're headed. So what we wanted to do, again, last night, we had the Citizen Budget Advisory Meeting. Actually, Dan Fleming, who is here tonight, was on that. Actually, Corey was in the audience as well. And so we have a good number of folks that are, some are being educated for the first time, others obviously have, have gone down this, this path, like Dan, quite sometimes, quite a number of times. But we're currently trying to pull all that information together. We had some good input from the Citizen Budget Advisory last night, and we'll be in the process of kind of pulling that together. What we wanted to do tonight was really walk you through, most specifically, some of the known things that we are wrestling with, and that is the stewardship plan. And we've made some recommendations here that you'll see, that we'll present. So with that said, let me get, let me, let John kind of walk you through this, and, you know, we certainly want you to ask questions along the way.
We are, we are moving along on whatever we can do on the budget. We've got about 90 to 95% of the, the operating budget numbers set, so we're, we're making good progress on that. I did want to bring a couple of things to your attention, primarily the stewardship plan stuff, but a couple of other things as well. The school board has its own budget, and as part of the policy governance piece, we're obligated to review that with the board and make sure that it, it meets the board's needs. So I have put together a simple budget here for the, the school board itself. I'd just like to have you take a look at it, and if there's, if there's initiatives that you'd like to pursue, that we haven't accommodated in this, we'd certainly look into it and see what it might cost and add it to this. If there's things that you don't think that need to be budgeted, we could certainly make those kind of adjustments as well. But primarily, this is specific to the school board itself. The school board stipends, the professional development, the board is empowered to go to different conferences and such, and the, and the school district will reimburse for those expenses. The total here that I'm showing you for the school board itself is $32,144 for next year. The current year's budget is $39,995. The, nominally, the, the legal services also get included in the same function grouping that the school board does, and so I'm budgeting those numbers at $135,000 for next year, based primarily on the experience so far this year and last year. The current year's budget for legal services, $130,000. One of the items in, in the current year's budget that, that we want to get to is a, say, paperless board agenda system. We budgeted $8,000 in the current year's budget to make that happen, and we do want to make that happen still. In here also, you'll see the School Board Association dues, budgeted at the current year of $5,700. Looks like we're going to spend $5,641, and I'm looking at $6,000 for the following year. This is where the, the various advertising that the board might issue, the cost of the RETN videotaping comes out of here. Those are in the purchase services group. We, we did spend, we did budget $25,000 in purchase service two years ago, but it doesn't look like that's necessary. So I've knocked that down to $7,000 for the coming year. But I did want to share that with you guys and, and see if you had any comments, suggestions, or whatever, before we move, you know, further along in that one.
I think all of these are, it's fair for you to, you know, digest and give us feedback along the way. It's not really necessarily fair to get you on the spot, but if you, as, as you look at this, you may ask other questions, or may want to have other things considered.
Yeah, I mean, just the quick comments I would make is, I would adjust the salaries as we had proposed last year.
Yep.
That didn't quite make it through at the level we talked about, which, just for the public, we're talking about $500, is that right? $500 per person?
Yep.
For a school board director, which kind of covers gas and childcare for most people, and not that, not quite that. The VSBA dues, they have a new dues structure, so I would just confirm that that amount is consistent with the new dues structure. And then I don't think we're going to need the legal level that we talked about, because all contracts will be settled.
Toggling, right.
For the most part. So I, I think we'll see some, we can talk about that a little bit more. The question I would have to the board is, do we want to consider some kind of investment in social media communications? And I don't know, I don't think we're interested in adding staff per se, but I wonder if it might be a tenth of a person or a position that is going to be supporting the district anyway, that, or something low-level that could support some of the social media presence that the community has kind of asked from the board. I guess I'd float that as a question.
I think if there's capacity amongst existing staff, you know, and that could be budgeted as part of this, I think that makes sense. I think hiring additional staff that would then be, you know, have to be managed and overseen and all that, I don't think that would be appropriate. But if, if we're talking about, yeah, a small amount of time from someone who's already on the staff, I think that makes sense.
My concern, though, about the legal expenses, I mean, you talked about contracts being settled, but, I mean, June 30, 2019 is when the teacher contract expires.
Well, this, the run rate, though, would be, would be hitting a little bit later in the year.
It's true, it's true.
Contracts had opened up for discussion.
It's true.
I mean, obviously, we've tried to open them up earlier in the past, but practically speaking, we wouldn't be incurring a significant increase till the fourth quarter of the year, so that's, that's what I'm looking at a little bit.
We can look at it, yep.
And maybe, John, if you could look at the quarterly run rate of past expenses, it might be a good barometer.
Yeah, it would just be good to see, you know, where those expenses start to hit.
I, I, I'll double-check that assumption.
And we'll look at the, the dues also. You're not wrong, in that with the Act 46 mergers, it's put some changed dues fee structures in there, because there's fewer people paying into the, into the.
Okay. The next piece I wanted to share with you is the enrollment that we ended up with on October 1st. And this reflects the actual enrollment numbers that went to the state for the October 1st collection. We budgeted for the current year a total enrollment of 2,440, and we reported 2,484. 2,249 of that was resident enrollment. 2,293 was the actual that we have on October 1st, a, about a 45 student increase from budget. We don't have the equalized pupil number yet, so I'm leaving that blank, but I think we'll see it go up 20 kids, maybe, based on our resident enrollment, maybe 30. The, the non-resident students ended up dead-on with the, the budget amount at 191. I don't know if I've ever seen that happen before, but we'll take credit for it.
Didn't we, didn't the year start out with us being about 15 or 20 kids above that?
Well, there's, there's several different kinds of tuition, and this is the regular ed tuition for which we charge the regular ed tuition rate. There's also, there's also some special ed, there's some project search, those kinds of things that, that should not be counted.
Included in this particular.
So I did roll those back out.
Okay.
And so there's a, a, a simple chart that shows the, the trend over time. And I thi, I think it's interesting to note that in the governor's latest letter, he does call out the fact that, you know, if, if, if your enrollment is increasing, we would expect your budgets to go up by some nominal amount. But if your, if your enrollment's decreasing, we would expect your, your budgets to come down. So I, I felt like that was a, an okay from the governor, that we should, like, double our budget or something, but we'll see where that goes.
Well, I think there was a Free Press article about that, how Chittenden County-
Is bucking the trend.
Yeah, bucking the trend, increasing enrollment.
If, if you're interested, I've given the detailed, school by school, and the, the tuition students on the next page. So that, it is, it is amazing that the, the individual buildings may vary by five or 10 kids, but the, the, the total result is, is usually pretty consistent. So that's the student, student counts. I, I am going to speak more, more, to more detail to the stewardship plan in a second.
Let me, let me just pause there.
When they go up on the screen.
For, for a quick second. Again, everything is, again, John's done a nice job pulling this together. I mean, I think, you know, you can observe a lot of things going on, but, you know, not, not just because Dan Fleming's in the, in the audience, but the non-resident student population, you know, some of you may say that's not significant, but there's a good number of students that are, you know, back in 2012, we had 122, and we've grown, you know, to 191. That far-right column says, you know, 5.12% of the population, up to 7.69. So, you know, there's some volatility, which is kind of what I hear Dan kind of echoing over, over the years, is there is volatility there with that, with that population. So when you're adding-
Well, it's not just volatility, it's dependence, yeah.
Well, and the other issue is, non-resident students here looks small, because you're comparing it to the entire district, as opposed to the high school.
That's right.
And that's a significant chunk of our high school.
Right, and we-
It's non-resident.
That's right, and we've broken that out in those, in different ways, and you'll see it again around the 100, and it's actually not 191, it's a little less than that at the high school, but, because we do have some students that are counted in here that are middle school students. And, but that, that, that percentage of, of the high school is, is large.
You know, we, I think as part of master planning and visioning, we have new demographic numbers, correct?
Right.
Do we know if, if the islands in Georgia do any demographic studies that might give us at least a future view toward the student population that might be looking to access South Burlington?
They all, I know, do kind of demographic study as far as who they use. Bill Smith used to be kind of the go-to person, and has retired probably three years ago, four years ago. So I don't know who they're using. I do know that with our demographer, we have asked them to also look at kind of the surrounding areas for kind of big trends that, that could impact this.
Because I guess my question is, I mean, we've seen this change over the years for South Burlington, but I don't know, for instance, if this 7.83% is a higher percentage of the student, the high school student age population coming from those geographies, or, I mean, if you look at the rest of the state, the suggestion is in rural areas, the student population's declining. So for this to be a growing percentage for South Burlington, it means more of those, more of that declining student population is coming-
Right.
-to South Burlington, but that also represents a bubble that would go away over time.
Based on their enrollment trends in their own communities.
Right. So I, I, that seems to be missing information that would be helpful to understand the, the, both the exposure, but also a little bit of a forecast of tuition students to South Burlington.
Well, certainly, again, in the same spirit of what we were talking about earlier on collaboration, is to-
Right.
-collect some of that information, if they have it, and make sure that's available for kind of their enrollment projections for us.
It's interesting, just to reiterate that point, it's high school. It's, you know, so I just quicked it, it's just under 20% of the high school is tuition. And then the increase, the, the increase in the number of kids, 27 total, but it's 19 of, of tuition students. So two-thirds of our year-over-year increase was due to tuition students, too. So it's very, very interesting. Substantial percentage and the majority of the growth.
So if, if you're all set with that, I'll move on to the stewardship plan.
I need to move.
Yeah, so while John's opening that up, you know, we, he did, he did also provide you with a slide, not page 5, of, of kind of this current by grade count as well. And in red, it gives a 2017 compared to where we are today in those categories. So that's also, I think, appropriately accompanies the previous slide.
So, I think I can use this cursor to kind of point things out a little bit. Anyone that's been around for a while will recognize this sheet. This is the so-called stewardship plan. Some places, it's called a capital improvement program or capital improvement plan. And the idea here is to try to break out the, the bigger ticket items, or the, the physical plant items that you may want to do to your physical plant over the next several years. And the, the full version of this plan goes out 10 years, another six years to the right, but it's a little bit unwieldy to try to present that, work with that. So this one here shows the FY 19 primarily as our focus, but also gives a little bit of attention to the 20, 20- of attention to the '20, '21, '22 years, and for reference, the FY '18 year. And so, what we show is, for example, in, let's just pick one, in FY '19, we have on this schedule a $325,000 ticket for restroom building and training room for the Munson Field. This is a project that's been in the works and on this schedule for several years. And I, given the budget climate, I kind of questioned whether we would go ahead with this, but in order to maintain the integrity of what we've been working on for a long time, all of this stuff, if we don't do it, primarily moves to the right, meaning we can't do it in FY '19, but maybe we can do it in '20 or '21, depending on the budget. So, the other piece here is we categorize the source of funds. That's what FS means, fund source. And for this one, for example, we'd say this would be funded from a bond issue. The other kind of example is every year, we seem to need some fencing somewhere in the district. So, we budget, or try to budget, $3,000 to $5,000 a year for miscellaneous fencing. Usually, we don't know where that would go, but it seems we always could use some somewhere. So, that's, the O indicates from the operating budget. So, as we get further along, we'll summarize those and do a little bit of analysis on those. The next one, I'm not going to go through this whole thing. You have the whole thing in your packet, and I just want to kind of walk you through to make sure you know how to read it. The other one that's been a perennial issue here is the storage building at the field space outside the high school and middle school. It would be nice to get more of our equipment undercover out of the elements in the wintertime. A storage building has been on this for several years. Again, it would be financed, in our estimation, with some sort of a bond issue, and our estimated cost of that is $50,000. Another item that we try to do every year is a bus. We've got a 23 bus fleet with a lifespan of 10 years per bus. We should be replacing two a year, that's what we try to do. So, this year, we're trying to replace two buses. Last year, we attempted two, but with the budget issues, we knocked that back to one. We did buy one bus, and it just arrived here, I think, this past week. The L in the fund source here means that we would propose to pay for that with a lease. And the lease term for something like a bus, we've always done five years. That means you don't want to finance something for more than its expected life. I'm going to skip down a little bit here. We usually try to budget about $20,000 for kitchen equipment throughout the district. So, if a refrigerator goes or an oven goes, we have some money to replace that. That, again, is coded as from a budget. An item that we budgeted last year, part of it, the security camera system upgrade, we budgeted $175,000 last year from a lease, and we would like to budget another $140,000 to supplement that lease with another one this coming year. An item that's been on this sheet for a long time also is a telephone system replacement. We have people in my office that have worked for the district for over 20 years, 25, 26 years, and they don't remember ever having a new phone system. So, no one knows how old this thing is, but it's certainly getting to the end of its life. We'd like to replace it. It works, but it would be prudent to try to replace that telephone system. It is a big-ticket item at $350,000. We would probably go with a VoIP system or whatever the most technologically up-to-date thing is. Right now, we have regular old analog phone systems. Again, we would finance that with a lease.
I don't want to go into a lot of right-now detail, because I just want to get you through this, but, you know, things like the phone system, I mean, we have some unique things the way we're set up. We house the whole PBX in one location, and then we connect through fiber to all of our other five schools. So, there's some efficiency to scale where you don't have to have five PBXs in all five schools. And that's, I think, similar to the security camera, that whole system rests in one school, and the system, all schools have, you know, camera systems that are running and recording, and that's all done in one location as well, with some redundancy, so.
This one here is the last one I'm going to talk about, I think. We're trying to struggle with how we deal with the Chamberlain problem with the noise, and one way of looking at this was a purchase of modular classrooms. And I had plugged in here $720,000 for that purpose, financed from a bond. Our current thinking is that we would rather do insulation, sound insulation, and see if that would work. So, the next time you see this sheet, it's going to look a little different. But all of these things are coded, they're listed, and down at the bottom, we do some summary tables by what kind of improvements they are. We do a summary by funding source, so there's $400,000 out of the operating budget. At this point, $4.6 million out of long-term bonds, $685,000 out of lease proceeds. And then, we try to say, okay, if we were to borrow a long-term bond at $4.6 million, what would that cost? Well, the first year bond issue is pretty cheap. You only have to pay one-half the debt service on the principal. So, in '19, that would be $92,000 for that $4.6 million bond issue, and we have $362,000 of debt service expense from the two other bonds that are outstanding. For the $685,000 lease project that this schedule would require, we would anticipate an annual cost of $153,892. And I'm showing on this chart, payments on the prior lease, payments on the current year's lease, and payments on the FY '19 lease, and then an attempt to total up the different costs at the bottom. I have to tell you, this is, these are big numbers, and it's going to be our struggle to try to hone these down to something that makes sense. There's nothing in here that I think is an emergency. We do have four or five roof projects in here. We don't need to do them in FY '19, but I don't want to put them off too long. We'd like to be proactive on the maintenance instead of waiting till the roofs fail, and then, what are we going to do about it? But we will be narrowing this down, and any, you know, input you had, and not, you know, not necessarily, this is a lot to digest, but we'd like to, you know, make sure we're doing the right thing in terms of all these priorities.
So, it's fair to say that we could have paired, we could have done a lot of pairing before this first show, but I think, consistent with the stewardship plan, that it has identified targeted timing around things that we're doing. Just as we started it, we had to work to reschedule it, just like we did last year. We had to reschedule some of those things, like the buses, et cetera. So, it's upon us currently that we come back at this, particularly with maybe the pressures on the operating budget that we probably can all anticipate. We typically have an average of around, about $700,000 in facilities out of the operating budget. And that, we think, you know, really needs to be addressed in a different way, and carrying things that are high-dollar items in our operating budget for facilities or facility upkeep, particularly when our taxpayers, you know, are paying for those in kind of a very, very short period of time versus any sort of long-term bonding. We think that really makes a lot of sense. And we've expressed, we've expressed this to the agency and to some other folks, and again, I think that has some level of traction around getting our facilities back under control. So, the next time you'll see this is we'll come back at this with some suggestions. We've gotten some suggestions from the budget advisory already, which is not in here, but I think this is the structure, this is kind of the tools and the funding coding that we're going to be using, and this is what we'll be working from. So, I don't know, particular questions, thoughts, concerns?
Is it possible, I know that there's going to be change to it, is it possible, though, just to go back to a couple of the big-ticket items? Because we started at the top and sort of went through, you know, some that were small, medium-sized, but the roofs, for example, like which roofs are we talking about?
Yeah.
And so, we don't have to dig into every single one, like $100,000 to me doesn't sort of meet the criteria. I'm talking about the million-dollar ones and the, you know, the $2 million ones. Those are huge expenses in this given year, and I guess a lot of my question revolves around whether they relate to the middle school and high school, which are sort of under the master planning and visioning, you know, top priority list, or whether they are more elementary schools or.
And what elementary.
Yeah, and what elementary schools.
Yeah.
Well, we do have on this list $1.2 million for the roof, part of the roof on this building. That's probably the biggest roof project. We do have, I think, there's an $85,000 roof project. This is, again, is not the entire roof at Chamberlain School, but it's part of the roof. It's the shingle section. My question, I think, is, do we want to put an $85,000 roof on Chamberlain?
And that's really, that's really our work moving forward, is to treat, you know, to do a series of validations around current condition, failure, likely failure rate, master planning and vision discussion, and ideas that might be emerging, all put into kind of a more concrete timeline to make certain. Again, if it's needed and it's got a high failure rate, then we don't want to jeopardize education. But if it has a low potential failure rate, and we can get three or four more years, again, with some expertise, and then that's going to be important. Again, I think we're all aware, if something's going to go away, we hate to have invested large amounts of dollars into something that may or may not be used by us. So, that's part of our thinking specific to the stewardship planning.
I feel like the categories on these, they're probably meaningful to folks that, you know, run the operations, but in terms of the community, I feel like the categories should really reflect security and safety, which I saw as a category, but my guess is it wasn't all-inclusive of some of the items that might fall into that category. I think the brackets on a lot of these projects are what would be normal preventative maintenance, and then what is the serviceable life of the investment, so sort of the expected failure. And sometime between those two, guardrails is when you take action. It's usually, you know, less expensive if you're doing routine preventative maintenance, but if you know you have a, as you said, David, kind of a five- or six-year window to failure, or the serviceable lifetime of something, you know, if you're closer to the end of that, you know you should be taking action sooner. And then, as you mentioned, I think there's some master planning type work that might be projects that are deferred based on the outcome of those recommendations. And then, student, I think student outcomes are in here. There are a few items I've seen that if they weren't addressed, they, there might be an impact on student learning, for instance. But I might suggest that this be, as you go through that process, that the categorization be revised to reflect, not by facility necessarily, but by some of those actions, so that when it gets translated to the community, it might be more impactful. And then, there may be some items on here that actually are required for compliance. I didn't really see that discerned, but aid projects, by way of example, might fall into that category.
That's good.
Any other comments from the board, from the public? Yes?
Hi, Elise Gaya. I just have a question about the legal services. You had $80,000 budgeted for that, and I know that the district is being sued by the Rebel Alliance. I'm curious about how much has been spent on that suit and how much you think might be needed in the future for that.
So, the, like, the dollars in the legal services earlier, I don't know if you were here when the board was talking about, kind of taking the legal services, putting them into quarters, because, again, we will go in and out of negotiations over, you know, we're currently in the first year of a two-year contract with the teachers as well as the support staff, so there'll be a little lull.
What are the legal services that Elise is mentioning relative to the petition issue? Are those in that same legal budget?
They would be.
Yes.
You have taken the negotiations out. You have $55,000 for negotiations, so the $80,000 is just legal services, not including negotiations. So, that's what I'm asking, right, that $80,000?
And we need, and we need, as I think mentioned earlier, we need to look at that as well. We're currently, do have some active lawsuits still continuing, at least legal services still continuing on those, so the petition is still an active, you know, suit that's currently taking money to make sure we are responding to that.
How much is the use of?
I don't know, I mean, we can certainly get that. John, you don't know off the top of your head on specific to the petition.
I wouldn't want to quote that, but.
So, we can certainly provide that.
Can certainly get that to you.
Is that something you would like? Great. Just make sure we have your email or phone number, whatever works.
I just want to ask a question for clarification, that that particular suit is not part of our coverage with Visbit. Is that the case? Because I was under the impression that it was.
It's part of our, it's under Vermont School Board's insurance trust. We're still with, under the umbrella, but we still have to pay for some of those services.
Okay.
You know, they have legal services on retainers, so.
Okay.
So, we can provide a number to date, but the update on that was there were, there were some clarification required of both parties after a 45-day extension by the judge that was submitted in the month of November, or October, correct? Yeah, so I think it's with the judge right now to determine what the next step is. That's accurate, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions from the public on the stewardship proposal? Any other board comments? So, David, what should we expect to see the next go-around?
So, I mean, we have quite a bit of work to do. We have meetings set up with our administrators. As I alluded to earlier, we still are kind of figuring out the roadmap and what parameters we're going to have to operate under. We certainly think we have some pretty good guidance from the budget advisory around the stewardship plan, along with some of your references today. So, you'll see us come back with a revised, not final, but a revised stewardship plan, at least on those funding codes and what that means.
Maybe I can just say that one of the things that the advisory committee asked for was, as was done in prior years, at least last year, I forgot whether it was done the year before, but an administrative prioritization of these tasks, these potential tasks, and what the potential alternatives might be, and what the philosophy is behind how they got to that categorization.
Prioritization, okay.
We've seen these numbers, but I don't think we said up or down on any of them. I think we simply said, give us some judgment on what you think is really important and why.
We did use that last year. I think it was helpful both for the advisory and for the board. We had those priorities on the very left column. We populated them that way. We did that actually on a good number of the budget components, if you remember.
I would just hope that this year, given where we are with, you know, the guidance that we're getting from outside, especially that along with prioritization for new initiatives, that we're taking a very hard look in those same administrative meetings, so that we're not sort of having to do two processes at what could potentially be taken out or made more efficient, because I really think that we're going to be up against it at the end. Last year, I think the assumption was kind of, you know, this is our carry forward from last year, and here are the things that we'd like to add on. last year and here are the things that we'd like to add on top. And it was, was very challenging, even last year at the end, when we had to redo the budget twice to, to find things to take out. I think this year we need to be proactive in thinking about that.
And are you providing any direction to administration on student-staff ratios at this point, David?
I haven't, we have not, I have not done that yet. I've only really just shared with, with the administrators kind of the current activity that's happening, correspondence, you know, the, the AOE secretaries later on ratios and recommendations, the governor's, you know, desire as well. There's a few other correspondence in there that I can't recall at the moment, but there's been a kind of a pretty steady cycle of information about the budget prognosis out of the, out of the state folks. That said, we haven't, you know, we're, you know, our outcomes, feedback from our students, our program of studies, our professional development work, you know, all that kind of comes all together to say, what do we need to continue to do to keep moving things forward as well as evaluate what we're currently doing and whether we would keep doing it, do more, or stop doing it. And so those, those will be conversations that we need to have. So that, that all begins right now, the central office team is, will be in the process of being at with all of the, in the administrators. The elementary folks, actually, the three will be all together with us. We will, we do have some alone time with them as well, but, you know, that's a way to make sure we're all kind of working collaboratively together. So those are currently in the, in the plan calendar.
Does the, I know the board has discussed kind of having that services budget, that version.
Mm-hmm.
What, I understand we don't know, you know, some of the state variables at this point, but what else do we need to get to that budget and sort of what the tax rate impact would be with that?
So in, what, John alluded to, you know, 95% or so budget loaded. And again, we, all, all of the offices have been challenged with a variety of things, from getting healthcare plans on to getting contracts settled. So whether it's in our office and Delina, who's sitting here tonight, you know, there's been a lot of tapped out people. The, the business office, who are loading of our, of our new, now that we have contracts, we can load them in. And so that 95%, we're 95% there. So that's a really, that's a big, that's a big part for us. And it's really nice that we have those known contracts. So that's, that is close to being done. That's a big, big part of our budget process. And then to be able to put on top of that, what are the, the metrics that play around how that, how that will matriculate into a tax rate? It doesn't necessarily though, get at the, what do you want to continue to do, stop doing, you know, or do more of? And that's really kind of gets at more of the zero, zero-based kind of mentality of looking at... And, and part of this will be shared with you at the next board meeting is a little bit of an, an update on our trauma program, the trauma and resilient pilot program that we passed last year at Rick Marca. Am I drawing, people drawing a blank on that?
Yeah.
So you'll get some feedback on that and what that, what that's done and what that might then mean for us moving forward as well around staffing and support to students. Because again, the whole reason we did that is we were seeing a pretty significant increase in staffing to accommodate students that were in pretty, pretty difficult places. So bottom line is, we're going to, the budget will get loaded. We've got to make some assumptions, those continued assumptions on the state, and we got to start to see what that looks like, you know, as we, as we roll out that first one. Again, John's probably one of the few business managers that's done this, has taken a stab at that yield calculation on how it translates. I know there's been a lot of questions that have been coming his way as a result of that, that work. Otherwise, you know, I kind of, I've kind of also said that many of my colleagues are going to, they're just going to wait until the end of December or January really to start the deeper conversation, because to do a lot of planning, dreaming, movement forward is futile. And again, it's not all about, it's not all about adding. It's really about how are we going to sustain what we have? And so that's, that's a lot.
Well, one, one of the things though, that occurs to me is we've got contracts in place and mo, staff should be enrolled in new healthcare plans at this point, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So given, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All of that is done and in the budget. The, the staff salaries, the staff benefits, the, the, the debt service, all the regular recurring things. What we don't have yet is the feedback from the principals that said, yeah, we, we wanted $4,000 worth of, you know, consumables last year and this year we can get by with 3,500 bucks. So we have to collect that data.
And I guess that's what I'm thinking, is given that we know wages and benefits represent 80% of school budgets, it would be very helpful at a minimum, knowing that we have contracts in place to see what the tax impact of wages and benefits that are known, again, with existing deployment, what that looks like. Because I think your administrators probably want to know that too, that if, again, I don't know what it will shake out at, but if that were to say the tax rate impact of that is a 3% increase, you know, that gives you a little bit of a measure of if I need to deploy resources in a different way to bring that to level funded, to comply with, you know, the governor's direction, for instance, where would I go within my facility to do that? And I'm not suggesting you, you do that.
Only do that, right.
Actually, I wouldn't, I'd say, don't do that exercise. Do what, knowing that we know benefits and, and wages, that would get us 80% of the way there of knowing what, what impact that has right now.
Yeah.
I've got enough of that put in that I'll tell you that what John Auburn is thinking about is a level funded budget. And it, it may be, it may be almost achievable. But remember, even with a level funded budget, it carries a 5.4% increase in the tax rate, according to my, you know, Elise, what ifs.
Propose, yeah.
So that's kind of like, we, I think we've got to do better than level funded if you want to maintain a tax rate that people are going to like.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't think we're weighing in yet on...
Tax rate.
A tax rate that might be taken to the community. I think it's an understanding of, you know, we've got signed contracts. Everybody worked really hard to, to get those and we've got new healthcare plans that'll be implemented or introduced January 1st that folks would, will have enrolled in at this point. So those are known quantities. So at a minimum, you, you've got the exercise you went through at the last board meeting of the impact of your estimated yield rate and, and what our enrollment and this common level of appraisal would do. I think if we can layer in wages and benefits now for...
If that would be helpful, we could certainly do that next time, because I have that data.
It could even be separate of the state stuff.
I thought we ought to try to get a full package before we kind of went the next step.
Well, I think, we can talk...
It's a big, it's a big nut rather than, I, I, I know we spend a lot of time tweaking, like you said, the, is it 4,000 or 3,500? And we've got a lot of stuff in stewardship that in the end, the discussion may be really the prioritization that Dan talked about, as well as the, the funding source. It will be what goes to a bond versus a lease versus an operation, operating budget.
Well, you've, you've, you've been pretty clear and it's worked well for us, the services kind of budget, if we were to continue to do what we were doing with, with the known entities, what, what does that look like kind of as a, and also the, kind of the level funding piece? In, in between that is really the conversation that you're looking for, kind of that builds back kind of from the zero base side of what do you need to continue to do, stop doing, want to do more of?
Unfortunately, though, I have to echo what John said is, you know, I could see at this point, a current services budget is almost out of the question. I mean, I, I agree with what you said, even level funded.
Is going to be a tough sell.
...have a really tough time passing a five and a quarter or 5.4% tax increase without a lot of, you know, communication to the community. I'm afraid you're right, John.
Yeah.
We might be looking at a cut.
But the thing is, the services budget though, gives us just, as Elizabeth likes to call it, the guardrail of like just how big we're talking in terms of the nut that we have to reach to get into that. So I really...
Place to start.
Yeah, it's a place to start and it, it shapes the conversation that you're having with administrators. Are we talking, you know, a tiny tweak to a class here and combining these sections? Or are we talking like, we have to decide between this program and this program this year and how are we going to prioritize this? Because those are totally different conversations about, can we just trim things here and trim things there? Or are we really talking major changes to the program?
Yeah, major reductions or changes.
And I don't think we have a good sense of that yet, until we have sort of what a services budget looks like.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're, as John said, very close to loading the, the entire budget that will give us the guardrail, I think. And I don't want you though, to just think that that's all we're going to do because it's, again, gets, needs to get back to, you know, continue to do, stop doing, or do more of. And it needs to correlate with, you know, kind of what we're trying to do for student outcomes connected to our ends. So I think this is a lot of information, the stewardship plan. Again, many of you have different levels of comfort with it, have seen it. Some of you have seen it a lot more than others. Again, we've added that funding, the funding source as a definitely, that's newer for us and definitely calling on bonding is something that we think is an important next step. Whether we include it or not, you're going to see things like, why would you be doing this to a roof there if it's in question? Why would you be doing something to a cafeteria at the high school if you're going to go into the deeper assessment? So we're going to be making some decisions on some of those things right off.
Any other comments from the board, from the public? All right. We ready to move?
Yeah.
Onto agenda. Item 10, master planning and visioning. This is warned for action, specific to a timeline adjustment.
So again, we've been touching on some of this already. Last night, we did have a master planning and visioning subcommittee group. So both Bridgette and Steve were there, along with John Auburn. And again, John Stewart's been working some with us on this as well, particularly with some of the particular areas of the master planning work. So a couple of things I, I want to go over, and then I want to really just let it turn over to Bridgette and Steve to give some updates. The, a couple of things that we've just recently got back, we did ask to do the sound, a sound assessment. And the reason to do the sound assessment was, was really to look at comparing or affirming the data that we've received from the, the previous report that was put out by the FAA in the FEIS statement that they used. So we have received back from ATC, the, kind of the parameters about how they would recommend that you go forward with a bid to do this. They have also provided a cost if they were to do it. And we, because we were, we were really unsure, they came back to us and gave us a fairly, a very delineated plan around how they would go about doing that, or how it would be, how it needs to be done to give you the data that you need. And then they also included that fee. We think this, I think this is a really important time for us to get the information back so that we can continue to move forward around looking at ways where we can have a contingent plan for students at Chamberlain. ATC provided the funding. It's underneath the $15,000. It's, it's just a bit, it's actually a bit over 14 if they were to do it in, in full. And again, this is a monitoring schedule that we think appropriately will, can be used to compare against the data that's currently, you know, on the books. So because it's under the, the $15,000 and under the executive limitation component for the superintendent, I'd like to be able to move forward with that. I want to be able to do that transparently with you all here, but I think it's critically important. If we go out to bid, then it's likely, it could be the same, same group coming back and it could push it out to, you know, a February, March, or April return. And given the importance of a contingency plan based on the timeline that we're going to discuss in a bit, I think it's an important step that we're able to move on. So again, I, I want to, I'm informing you of that. Obviously, if there's questions that come along as we continue the discussion, then I'm certainly happy to answer those. But let me, let me let both Bridgette and Steve kind of just take it over from here and give, allow them to give you the reflection of where we're at.
Steve, do you want me to just kind of run through and you can...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So I'll leave the, the airport noise issues aside for now. David, but I will talk about the contingency plan a little bit. David shared with us last night that after researching the costs and logistics of trailers and the return on investment and resale value, you know, if we were to only use them for a short term, that he just didn't think financially that was a realistic route to go if we needed to house Chamberlain students quickly at one of the other sites. It didn't, it didn't seem to make much sense. We talked about capacity issues if we were to go back to the old plan that we had potentially discussed, which would be to move the fifth graders to the middle school and try to put the students from Chamberlain into the other two schools. The issue there is that we just have capacity issues. I mean, even if we moved the fifth grade here, we still would end up having to have some kind of temporary situation probably at, at RMCS and at Orchard in order to house those students. So David's really focusing his time and energy on pursuing insulation of Chamberlain with the idea that we'll then pursue sort of parallel, we'll pursue money for that to sort of recoup our costs for insulating Chamberlain from the FAA, from the program that they've sort of started already. I won't go into all the details of that program and how we're interacting with it. If you guys have questions, you can ask David more specifically. On the high school and middle school, we met with the architects, Doran Whittier, who are going to do the phase one study of the middle school and the high school on November 9th, so last Thursday. They are going to start their work with a walkthrough of both buildings next week, hopefully. I don't know if they've actually got that scheduled, but next week is the plan. We expect a final report from them sometime in February with detailed cost estimates. And I sort of pushed pretty hard on what those cost estimates would look like, what format they would be and how detailed they would be. And it's a much more detailed type study than what we had talked about in our previous master planning and visioning exercise. So it would be down to the granular level of project by project by project, what the different costs break down for each of those projects might be. That being said, if there are any major safety issues that they uncover in the early part of their work, they will fast track, they will sort of raise those up to David and John so that if there's anything major, significant that really needs to be addressed in this year's budget, we can get that in there as opposed to waiting until February to find out that we have these, these safety and health issues. We're not expecting anything major out of those. This is more of a study of what the buildings can do if we decide to renovate them or whether renovations that we hope for are realistic. We also had a discussion amongst the folks who are at the master planning and visioning subcommittee meeting, not with Doran Whittier, but we discussed amongst ourselves how to get the educational wants and needs sort of framed before we go into phase two of the Doran Whittier work. Because I expressed that I was a little uncomfortable with architects leading that discussion of what our hopes as a community, a school community are for curriculum, because I really feel like the curriculum needs to be driving what the architecture is as opposed to architects sort of putting in front of the community some very beautiful looking potential plans and, and, you know, having people get excited about things that may or may not actually help us academically. And so we started to have that discussion. I think we have to do a little bit more work there to decide who will lead that and what the appropriate process is to determine that. It's kind of an iterative process because you could also see the, and David made the argument, you could get a consultant in to lead the community discussion of what we would like from the curriculum and how we would like to change it. And some of those things simply may not be possible in the budget or the, the buildings that we have now. I should say in our Doran Whittier meeting that, you know, Pat Burke really wanted us to focus on, you know, just how many renovations, just how expensive do the renovations need to be before we think about a new high school? Not that he was advocating for that, but that discussion definitely came off as we were talking to Doran Whittier. So yeah, that's kind of where we are with the middle school and high school. And it's why I've been asking a lot of questions about how much of the stewardship budget relates to those two buildings, because if we're talking about, you know, completely changing the configuration of the high school in some way, we don't want to spend an enormous amount of money on it if we don't have to or we don't think it's feasible. So that's middle school and high school enrollment. We discussed basically the same page that you've already seen, so I won't go through it. We talked through where enrollment is up and where it's down. So Rick Marcaut being the one place that it's kind of down this year, mostly because kindergarten's much smaller than it has been in previous years. much smaller than it has been in previous years.
And a little bit of volatility on the
Right.
Change of no child left behind to the, you know, to the, where we had some students coming to that, and then now going back.
And so I just want to emphasize on that, that, you know, the current forecast is that we are either to be, we're looking at steady to increases over the next 10 years, really, in our demographic study. And that's partly because of, you know, new information that we fed into this updated version of the study, but it's also because he had corrected a mistake in the previous study that he had found in his, his formula. So I think we're feeling reasonably confident that there's sort of a general trend, but as Steve points out, there's so much volatility on a year-to-year basis that that's kind of the general direction. But on a year-to-year basis, you know, there may be ups and downs as we go through that. And then the final major piece that we talked about is David presented to us a decision-making rubric that kind of discusses the conditions at each school. Some of these things are quantitative, some of them are qualitative. And he's really sent us away with that to sort of think about whether we felt like it included everything we wanted to see and whether it was appropriate. But he sort of labeled everything with one of three levels, like, you know, everything's going great, everything, there might be a mild concern, or there's a real problem, you know, in each of these different categories that, and there are categories that we've seen before in the previous master planning and visioning exercise and that David's continued to talk about at each of the schools. So that is kind of what we went through in our meeting. So there'll be more updates, you know, as we go along. Do you have anything to add, Steve?
No, that was great.
Good summary. Thanks.
Yeah, the, we're calling it kind of the analysis or threshold criteria. And Bridgette did a nice job of that. The condition codes would be kind of no concerns are evident. Another one would be elements of concern are evident, but the impact is considered minor to potential concerns are evident and would be significant. Yep. And the idea is, and we're close, Bridgette referenced the demographic study, we're close to be getting that back. So as we get that back, then that will begin to populate. And again, I've kind of been, you know, going through a variety of those, those different areas and trying to pull those together. And my desire would then be to give that as a kind of a summary and be able to give kind of a score or assessment of that where we're at.
Then before we move on, I guess the last thing was the timeline adjustment. So we really didn't discuss it too much. It was basically just David had presented to us the updated resolution that we discussed last time in our board meeting. I think we all kind of came to an agreement on most of those dates. And I think that one was warned for action. So I don't know what we need to do in that regard tonight.
Yeah, let me just stop on sort of what you covered. Any other questions from Alex? Any, well, you and Steve were there, Bridgette. Any questions or comments from the public regarding master planning and visioning update? All right. Do you want to review the timeline?
Sure. And so the timeline that we're talking about are specific to the charge or the direction that was provided by the board. To me, is kind of the decision points. And so we had previously, or the board had previously set some dates, and we've changed those based on kind of the current situation. So identity, number one was to identify specific needs for upgrades at the high school and the middle school. It will also address the educational value of each upgrade, recommended timelines and estimates of cost. No later than, and the revised is now April 30th, 2019, and it was June 30th, 18. Two was to identify and set up a system to monitor and report issues that are at or may impact the district's ability to maintain slash improve the quality of the pre-K5 education with specific emphasis on providing documentation by April 30th. And that date was previously April, or September 1st, 2017. So that date had passed. Of any impacts or threats to the health and education outcomes to students caused by the location and/or physical space of the Chamberlain Elementary School, in the meantime, the district will continue to operate the three current elementary schools. Item three, to develop a contingency plan by now the new day, April 30th, 2018. That was December 31st of 17. To ensure equitable delivery of elementary education services in South Burlington should the Chamberlain Elementary School need to be closed. And then four, revitalize the district's strategic plan, starting with an analysis of the current strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and threats, and develop a plan for additional phases of a strategic plan process by December 31st, 2018. The information gathered in the master planning and visioning process will form the starting point for the analysis. And again, that, that was the same date. So those, those are the revised dates. Also, I shared with you what the previous was, were.
So you've got three, the top three objectives are all now April of 2018 or 19, correct?
Right. So you've got two April, the item, the monitoring and contingency are now April 30th of 18 with the, the upgrades, and this is connected to the second phase of the master planning work, would be April 30th of 19.
Yeah, I guess the only question I'd ask is, should you have the same date on both item two, which is identifying, setting up a system to monitor and report issues, and then the contingency plan at the same time? Any, Bridgette or Steve, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's an interesting point. The other point, which may be a bigger one, is that we really crafted three as, you know, it really does say if the Chamberlain Elementary School needs to be closed, and the contingency plan we're talking about now is really mitigating impacts if we find that there are impacts that need to be mitigated. And so I don't know if the whole wording of that one actually needs to be changed to reflect the direction that we're going in, or if we really are still asking David to, even though we're headed down the insulation route, if we're still asking him to have in the back pocket, if insulation turns out not to be enough, or, you know, something happens and that doesn't occur, in, in the back pocket, what happens if we do have to close the school? So, yeah, I'm wondering if we're actually ready for action on this tonight, or whether we need to, to have another thought about what we really want from bullet point number three.
It's really what you want. I mean, I, I view these as not later than. I mean, the hope is that we have informed information earlier than. I think, you know, one of the, the frames that we, we know exists is the F-35s, the first F-35 comes in September of 19. So the contingency plan, you know, obviously, we're already upon us with, like, the restrictions upon budgeting, you know, any sort of thing. That's why I think it's important that we're talking about issues in this proposed next cycle, because we're not going to have the time to be able to react, so.
Yeah, I'm not so bothered, you know, I think about, about the dates being the same because the, the actual report that we're expecting is, well, before April 30th, this first report. And the system would be an ongoing system of, of monitoring. And I think to be in parallel, developing a contingency plan doesn't bother me so much. I don't know what you think.
I think you're right. I mean, the outcome is going to be the same. Either we're going to say, look, things are okay now, things are not okay now, or, you know, we've got the baseline if things are not okay in the future, but your contingencies are going to be equally applicable.
Yeah.
So I see no problem running them concurrently.
So are we comfortable taking action?
I am.
On the dates as proposed? Do I have a motion to accept the dates as proposed by Superintendent Yeo?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number 11, policy review.
So the first one is the third reading of the prevention of harassment, hazing and bullying. And she asked for some clarity, legal clarity on a couple of things. One was the use of, I think it was
Lawful harassment.
Unlawful harassment.
Just plain old.
Right. And you see feedback from attorneys on that particular one. And then the other was, I think, sanctions. And again, I don't know that I got that right for you, but it was really, you know, could we change that up without significantly changing the policy? So those, that's feedback from our attorneys on, on those two.
Any additional comments or questions on policy F4?
I think we were basically told we don't allow, we're not allowed to have any comments on it. No, Phoebe basically said, Tom, Bridgette, just be quiet. Just accept it the way it is.
Do you want to take these one by one, David?
Sure. I mean, I just thought we would do that one and give you that feedback. The next one is the drug and alcohol.
Well, this one's an action one.
Yes, it is.
So should I go ahead and?
Yeah, I think it'd be fine.
So do I have a motion to approve the policy F4, prevention of harassment, hazing and bullying of students?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
F4?
Thank you. Next one's a second reading on the alcohol. And the only, the only feedback, again, when we did a quick, quick review, or you did a quick review, was kind of the sanctions. Was there, was there more to that? And so, again, that was a, that was also provided some feedback and consequences contained was, was clear and also appropriate.
Any other comments or questions on policy F6?
Again, this is the second reading, so we would go forward.
Another reading?
Have another reading and a market for action.
All right, move that one forward.
And the next one is also second reading, which is on firearms. Again, I don't know that you had a lot of time to look at this one, but it's, again, it's pretty short and pretty explicit to what we've had and there's a, and what the model policy is. Again, this is second reading, too.
Right. If there's no questions, we'll move that forward. For a third reading? All right. We'll move on to agenda item 12, executive limitations, policy monitoring.
So this is 2.2, and we did make some changes from the last reading. Under detail policies two, it was just adding, it has no impact on students under the superintendent's interpretation highlighted in yellow. And we also, it was recommended we add some, or that I add some evidence under four, allow students to be unprepared to deal with emergency situations. So I did put in here crisis trainings that took place. And again, these are the ones that we, as a district, knew that I did not give all of the ones that happen by individual buildings, you know, for their own training. We do recommend that they do that on an ongoing basis. I, I have recommended that we, that we collect those as well, just for our own, so there's some changes in there as well. And then the other part is around incidents that have occurred. So there was just to give a little, we did not mark all of those, or we did not collect all of those. We do, this is another opportunity. I mean, I think it's important that if you do exercise a, a crisis command, then we should know about what that is so we can keep track if one district, if one school's, you know, 50% higher, is something going on that we should be aware of. So we're, we're going to be collecting, you know, those situations. Sometimes, you know, as it says here, it may be that we cleared the halls because there was an adult that was in our building and needed to have, you know, medical assistance, and we didn't need, we don't, we don't want students in change of class, being, number one, exposed to that, or, or hindering the appropriate care for the particular individual. So those are some examples. Obviously, in April, you know that there was a pretty significant event that happened at the high school over that period, so that, that's there as well. And I think the other, page six of nine, it was just adding the mentor program specific to teachers. We added, there was the one grievance around the personalized learning plans advisories that was on, that was added. Page eight of nine, and some added feedback on administrative feedback and suggested growth opportunities. I think that was, that was it.
Any comments or questions? Are we ready for action on this one?
I, I think, I think you could be. It's been your choice if you wanted to go through that.
All right. So let me go through the detailed policies first. This is relative to policy monitoring report 2.2, treatment of staff. So the first detailed policy, number one, operate without written personnel rules that clarify and define rules, rights, responsibilities, and evaluation for staff, provide for effective, effective handling of grievances, and protect against wrongful conditions such as nepotism and grossly preferential treatment for personal reasons. Is the interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
Is there adequate data?
Yes.
And are we in compliance?
Yes.
A detailed policy two, discriminate against any staff member for non-disruptive expression of dissent. Is it a reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Are there adequate data?
Yes.
And are we in compliance?
Yes.
Detail policy three, fail to acquaint staff with their protections under this policy. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Detail four, allow staff to be unprepared to deal with emergency situations. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Detail policy five, fail to create a positive organizational climate conducive to achievement of the ends. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
And detail policy six, neglect to provide meaningful and timely performance evaluations to administrators, teachers, and staff.
Yes.
Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
And are we in compliance?
Yes.
Are we in compliance? We're no on that one, I think.
Right. I reported.
Oh, teachers, that's right.
I reported violation.
Teachers, that's right.
So although we have reasonable interpretation, adequate data, we are not in compliance?
Right.
All right, for the overall policy, then, we will be out of compliance because of that one, but with respect to the treatment of paid and volunteer staff, the superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions that are untimely, unfair, undignified, disorganized, or vague. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And we will be not in compliance? And is the compliance plan acceptable?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to 2.4, financial condition and activities.
I've tried to fix the issues from the last time with this. There was a question, an inconsistency in, I think, detail policy eight versus the chart on page two. And that came from a reference to a statement in the audit report that I was not reading correctly. So I fixed that.
I still don't think it matches. Page eight versus page two. Evidence, under evidence number two, it says the general fund balance is projected to be $1,129,488. That doesn't match the ending total fund balance on, in line seven on page two. Nor does the $553,435 on page eight match the, the amount in line eight, which is $516,901.
Well, I thought I had this figured out.
I think the top part's much better on page two, because, because section, evidence two on page two was not quite right last time. That one makes sense to me now, but the, there's still a mismatch between the two. last time, that one makes sense to me now, but there's still a mismatch between the two.
So we need to.
The problem is the treatment, and I guess I'm just not seeing how to clarify this. There's a, in the, in the financial statements, there's a non-spendable portion of the fund balance. And on these two pages, I'm treating that two different ways. And that's about a $30,000 number. And I'm, I'm sorry, but I just apparently haven't clarified it yet.
Maybe we can then note that.
I believe I fixed whatever else was wrong in here. I don't, I thought I'd fixed the whole thing, but.
So let's, we can bring that back and.
So beyond reconciling page two and eight, any other comments or questions on the balance of the report?
The only thing I want to say is that I think I missed this last time. On page eight, under the superintendent's interpretation. It says, I interpret this to mean that the ending fund balance at the end of the year must be no less than the beginning fund balance. That's not really true, right? The, the fund balance will change or go down, it's supposed to go down, right? Because we're supposed to be spending some of the fund balance.
I think that's a problematical, kind of a policy, detail policy, because you do, you do spend surplus every year as part of the tax rate setting process to reduce the tax levy.
But I think the interpretation of it is we're not spending surplus beyond what's budgeted.
Right.
So we're saying that a chunk of the surplus is budgeted and has to be budgeted. But it's basically like you need an extra.
Second sentence starts to bet more.
I think the second sentence gets at it more.
Yeah, but the first sentence was just the problematical one to me. The other, the rest of it seemed to sort of fit with what we're doing or how it's.
I might almost eliminate that first sentence, I think.
That's right.
That would address it.
Yep.
Well, let us, we'll look at those two pages and bring it back.
Well, actually, just to be careful, if we're eliminating that first sentence, it says, I, superintendent, and the second one is, I, superintendent, am not authorized to expend funds, excessive funds generated and budgeted in the current year, plus any funds that remained on hand at the close of the prior period. That's not quite right either, because you're not allowed to spend everything that was, was on hand at the close of the prior period. It's, it's funds generated and budgeted.
Inclusive of surplus.
Inclusive of any surplus that was budgeted as a revenue source, or something to that effect.
I think we got it too complicated.
Yeah, I would just be clear, I think you, I think you know what you want to say there.
Yeah, that's why I think I missed it last time, because the discussion is that you clearly, I understand from my discussion with you, you clearly understand this, and John understands it in terms of what has to be budgeted and what has to be spent. It's just when you read this with fresh eyes again, it doesn't quite match the discussion that we had.
Yep, okay.
Anything else in the balance of the report? Steve, Alex? All right, so we'll move that one forward to the next agenda. All right, ends monitoring?
So again, this is a pretty lengthy, this is again just the academic component of our ends, academic proficiency. And so, again, what has been worked on is to try to provide, you know, cohorts, cohort tracking over time, specific to articulating how we're doing regarding academic proficiency. So I'm just going to ask Stuart to just walk you through this. We'll try to be, just give you a quick overview and then have enough time for you to just ask questions. Again, this is pretty lengthy and it's an important one.
So, good evening. This is a report that's been updated for this year that you saw actually in April when we put in front of you the new interpretations to the ends policy for all four. But as I began to think about it, you know, this in itself is just overwhelming, and by bringing you all four, I don't think that we're really giving the time to each one. So the plan is to do this one, you know, sometime in a month and a half, maybe right after the budget. We'll probably follow that up with lifelong learning and then citizenship, and actually end with personal development, not because of the number or order that they're in, but in terms of when certain data is available, that would make those reports more germane. So the first part is the superintendent's interpretation, which is the same for all of the policies, because it's actually the ends policy that pulls it together. So we have the superintendent's piece, then we list the components of academic proficiency, and then pretty much the superintendent's specific interpretation then related to academic proficiency. So one is an intro to the whole policy and the other is specific to that. And then the type of evidence. So the main evidence that we have provided at this time is the cohort, as David said, which is the, the subtests within the S-PAC in English Language Arts, which provides specific looking at reading, writing, speaking, listening, and research. And one piece of new data, I don't know if that makes it, on the pop of page four, I do want to point out, because we actually have S-PAC data for the first class that's graduating, which we haven't had before, and that is, that 64% of our students in English Language Arts were 1.5 above the norm. So the test is a norm, that part of the test is normed, and we get the data of who's norm, you know, who's within that range of 1.5 to below 1.5, who's below 1.5. And you can see that substantially, we do pretty well. That 64% English Language Arts are 1.5 above the standard deviation in the components of, well, research, you can see the different ones. I was just looking at the end, but you can see some are better than others. Listening, we need to keep working on listening.
So Stuart, again, I think the, the charts and what that means to us, again, I think it's nice that we have kind of the cohort tracking, up, stayed the same, we're down.
Right, we have three years of tracking and we'll have at the end of this year, you know, for next fall, you know, a fourth year of tracking as well. The only difference will be, if you look at the cohort, just to bring your attention to it, the current ninth grade, that is their eighth grade data that you're, you know, seeing there in the 2017 column, we actually will have their data next year again, because ninth graders will be taking the S-PAC as opposed to 11th graders, but those top two groups will never get S-PAC data for. So they will drop off, whereas when it was 11th graders before, we would, it's going to be a while again before we hit another graduating class. Then we have the mathematics, the same thing. In the case of mathematics, it's concepts and procedures, problem solving and communicating and reasoning, and we have the three years of data in terms of how the cohorts have done. And again, in this particular part, when we say, you know, either red or green or yellow, we're not making a comment on whether that's a good score or not, we're just basically talking about whether that cohort has gone down or up over a given year, over the three percentage points. And then we show the math of our number of kids above the standard deviation from the graduating class. We then use report card data. So the report card data is two years of data, and starting with the pieces that we now assess in English Language Arts. And I just want to point out that, you know, I have bullet points above each in terms of what those are evidence of proving. So for example, building strong content knowledge consistent with state-approved standards in district curriculum, and the other things related to that. There are obviously parts of our academic proficiency that are not proved by the evidence here in the, in that report card. And then we give you the middle school, the high school, again, at eighth grade and at 11th grade, the data in terms of how the students are doing. And in that case, we're talking about kids who are above a B minus as the standard of proficiency. And, you know, again, just going through, as we look at the math part for middle and high, science, we will be able to provide that data starting next year, as we've changed our report cards with infinite campus under, because right now, science at the elementary school is pretty much written out, you know, what they studied and how they did. We can't pull the data out of School Master, which this is still School Master data you're seeing. So unless we gave you, you know, sentences of teachers' comments, which we could do, it's hard to provide that data at the elementary and the school in science, and you'll see the same in social studies. But we do have the report card data from both the middle and high school. And again, the same with social studies. Obviously, we don't, at this point, provide world language at the elementary, so there is no world language data, but you can see the world language data. In the cases of world language data, especially at the high school, that data reflects the number of students who actually take world language, where it's an elective. So I try to give you those numbers, so, you know, you can't say, well, that's based on every student. And again, the next data related to, oh, arts, music and the arts, visual arts at the elementary, and then the corresponding at the middle and the high with the students who participate in chorus. And again, while all students take art in the middle school, not all students take band and chorus, so those are the numbers of students who participate in any given year. And where it's not applicable, there was no eighth grade time lab or music appreciation in the 15, 16 school year, that's an expansion, or a schedule change that allowed that to happen so that those are now provided in the, in the middle school. And so that's why you only have one year of data. And again, moving on in terms of the visual arts courses in the high school, which again are electives, and then technology and business, which we don't do until high school, and then multimedia, which is part of that, and the technology in the 3D studio, which is the various high school and the business courses. And again, those are elective courses, and in some cases, very few students may be taking those courses. That's based on the students who take it. And finally, physical education, which of course we provide K through 12. So these are fifth grade results. I do want to let you know, in terms of both the math report card for elementary and the PE, we are changing the proficiencies so that the data that is provided next year will have some overlap, but it won't be the same standards, you know, which is one of the things, as we move to more proficiency-based grading, there will be changes and it's not always possible to do direct correlations year after year. And, and then you can see physical education and health, which brings me to the summation. You know, at this point, I report non-compliance mostly because we are changing the way we gather and grade. You know, grading is not a great way to determine proficiency, where I say anybody who has a B minus as opposed to actually saying a student is proficient in a particular skill set. And as you know, in the high school, and I think that, you know, you can see the report of how we're moving, but if you look at the PE report card, because that is the only one at the quarter, that is the new piece. You're okay?
Yeah, bud.
Okay. Which is the new piece that because high school PE courses are quarterly, we are, this quarter, when students get report cards, they will be not only being, getting a grade as they always have in the past, but they will also be getting, as you can see on this sample report card, they are also going to be getting a piece in terms of knowledge, I can apply, knowledge of concepts, principles, strategy, and tactics, and the transferable skill, which is creative and practical problem solving, which aligns with the ends as well. In the semester, that will be true for all high school, ninth and 10th grade report cards, the ones that are related. And when we give the PBGR report, which I think we'll be doing in a couple of weeks, I will show you the posters, which show you what at each level each student is doing. So that's the end of my report, and I know that Delina made a, I think, a page, I don't know if you have it, Elizabeth, the usual piece in which we decided, and again, I think the board needs to determine whether that's how you want to score it, so to speak, by each one of the, the pieces, you know, building strong content knowledge consistent with state-approved standards, and ask if the evidence is consistent for that or whether you want to look at it more holistically. And so, and then whatever we do here, that's what we'll do with the other three as we roll them out.
So Stuart, I want to just, just a quick thing. I mean, I think that what's important is that the data that we collect, we're responding to. You know, when we talk about, you know, data walls and math stuff, so when you're seeing the results and you're, I think the wonder is, all right, so you've gone from a green to a red, what are you doing about that?
Right.
And so I think, can you just articulate a little bit about what's happening at each of the schools? Because again, this, this is a report, but well before it's reported, we have, we have some strategies that are occurring on, on delivering instruction.
Right, and, and, you know, with all the data that we get, we continually look at, you know, what are the instructional practices, where do we do well, where do we not do as well? One of the key aspects that we're looking at, and we have been before, is the question, if we look at our students in poverty, which isn't reflected in this particular report, but in other reports that I've given to the board, you know, if we could bring those students up, we would have considerably stronger scores, that we are, for 80% of our students, we're doing a very good job, and for some of our other students, not as well. And that's the continual struggle we have and that we're examining. And the data walls at the elementary schools have really made that discussion more lively. Again, the, the question of how to build best-first instruction is what we've been working on over the last several years. And I don't want to use the excuse, you know, that, you know, everybody else's S-PAC scores went down too, because, well, most of them did, some of them obviously went up. And, and that's a key piece of just why we want to track it as cohort data, and not just as fifth graders did this, fifth graders did this, because it's not the same fifth graders. So, and again, we used minus, plus, or 2%, you know. I don't know if that's, you know, a big enough margin, you know. So again, you know, if we went up two, you know, we got a green, I'm not sure that that's as fair as, you know, if we went down two, we got a red. But I really didn't want to hide the data, you know, by making it appear better or worse than it is.
Yeah, one thing, when I looked at this, this is a comprehensive presentation of the data, for sure. It's really hard as a layperson, like, I'm, I'm sort of looking at it from a trend. Like, if I just look at the trend at each grade level over a three-year period, I see more red and yellow in the current year than in prior years for, which show, which basically says more individual grades are showing up with red or yellow. And then when I look at the summary for class of 2018 compared to the state, it's hard for me not to look at that and say, gee, do we have a trend that is downward in some way? I'll just use a really generic, you know, phrase. And then at the summary level, granted, South Burlington data, in many cases, most cases, is significantly better than the state, but by way of example, is 57% in writing, is that saying 57% of the class of 2018 is proficient at writing based on this assessment?
Based on this assessment, that's, that's what they're saying.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's a good, you know, 20-plus points above the state, but is that?
Right, and, and.
Adequate.
I think, Elizabeth, that's the biggest question for all of us. And, and I think, Elizabeth, that's the biggest question for all of us. You know, the goal would be, you know, and the state is setting new targets, that we'll be able to add into this report after this year, which is part of the educational quality standards, about what the rise should be.
Between each grade.
As we, you know, as you progress, and as the test is, you know, because, as I said when I gave my report on S-Back, they changed the game, you know, so that part of the writing in the past was a reflection on a lesson that was taught to students, and this year, for example, it was based on a long reading passage. And so one of the things we're dealing with is the question of fatigue, you know, which wasn't there before. But at the same time, the other thing is that this coming year, ninth graders, not 11th graders, will be taking the S-Back. The good news is, we'll know how our eighth graders did in their first year of high school, but I don't know what that assessment looks like, you know, how do they make it from an 11th grade to a ninth grade assessment? So it, it won't be the same, nobody's ever taken that assessment before. So even though we'll see the trend data of that cohort, I can't tell you if the assessment's totally related. Those are the questions that, you know, we all have, in, in terms of as they fine-tune the assessments themselves, which is the question of what other evidence, right? So the, the key is, you know, we have a wide variety of places. I don't have any of the ACT data in this report, but actually, we now have from last year seniors, because I'm doing 11th grade data, but I have from last year's seniors, where every kid we paid so they could take the ACT, I do have that data as well. I could add that kind of evidence into this report, if people felt that was useful, and that has a different writing criteria.
I guess I'm really struggling with how much the S-Back is telling us, because it, it feels like even in the cohorts, I'm not so concerned about how you've coded things, but there's some major jumps, up and down, and up and down, and, or down and up. And I, I struggle to believe that that's really to do with our teaching methods changing. So I'm struggling with how this data actually informs our, you know, what we're doing curriculum-wise or professional development-wise. I'm struggling with, with how useful this data is, frankly. I mean, it kind of gives us some kind of, you know, how kids did on the test, but it's so all over the place that it's hard to take out that noise from, whether it's, you know, a different group of kids coming into that same grade level that, you know, may have different circumstances at home, or whether, as you're saying, it's changes to the test, and, you know, perhaps it's just not enough years of looking at the test to actually get a trend. But I, I'm struggling with how this helps us make decisions, frankly, or how this actually gets us to how we're doing on the N's, because it doesn't seem like there's a clear trend to me. So I, I, I mean, how, how is your team, you know, using this information when they look at it?
So, so we look at this information in, in a couple ways, you know. So the way that I put it out here is cohort data about the whole scores, because, again, it's that question of, you know, this is a public report, and, you know, the, you know, we work a lot in terms of how individual students are doing, and then anomalies we see within their programs. So teachers, you know, have the actual student data, not at this macro level, and it's really at the more student-centered data that we can really look and see how a particular student who seems to be fluctuating back and forth. So I have a whole chart of every eighth grader, for example, in English, Language, Arts and Math, with how they did as sixth graders, how they did as seventh graders, and how they did as eighth graders on these subtests, by student, by disability, by poverty. And the teachers look at that data, so they see a kid, and we do have kids who've been green the whole time, threes or fours, but we do have kids who got a three, then a two, then a three, or a three, then a two, then a three. And so we're really trying to understand what that means. So for actual analyzing the work with kids, this is not the data that we really, you know, go to. It gives us trends overall, which hopefully, over time, will smooth out and always go in an upward trajectory, but for actual working on how to improve instruction, we look at more the individual student results.
I mean, there's a little of data, you know, that we collect on, on students, you know, classroom teachers, or grade levels, or school, and that's why I kind of referred to the data wall a little bit. I mean, the data wall begins to make a lot more sense if you're the classroom teacher or cohort saying, what do we know? I mean, we, they have a lot of information about, about the child, and can map out kind of the best course for them, and, Stuart, it's a good tier-one instruction. What's the, what's that absolute and critical instruction that's happening day in and day out? You know, I think what we're trying to provide is, you know, articulation that we're, we're working towards meeting the N's outcomes, given the data, and, you know, I think it's really hard to, how much data do you want that would provide some validation that we're responding to via the curriculum, via professional development, and that instruction in the classroom?
But that's what I'm struggling with. I mean, as Elizabeth said, I mean, if you just look at this year, for example, it's a lot of reds and yellows. So, I mean, if you were just to take only this, you'd say, this says that we're not doing it, that, that there's something not right in what we're doing, or that needs to be improved, because, granted, this is only three years, so it's not a long-term trend, but it would raise alarm bells for me. The reason I'm not as concerned is I'm, I'm more concerned about the data and whether it's actually going to help us monitor where we are, because it just bounces so much in a specific grade, that it, I can't believe that instruction is changing that much on a year-to-year basis, that, that are, that are, for example, for the seventh graders, you know, that they're, they're, so they went from 62% to, so then maybe their sixth grade instruction was so much better that they were up to 74%, and then, then their seventh grade instruction is so bad that they're back down to 62. Like, that doesn't make sense to me. That doesn't, I, I can't read that from this information, because it's so all over the place. But in general, the trend doesn't look great, and I, I don't know how to quite frame the conversation about, you know, what we're doing about that.
I think, I mean, there's a conversation that we can get deeper in around, and we have assessments and tests like this, and then we have proficiencies, which are, you know, demonstrating your ability to actually demonstrate the content versus taking a test.
Right.
And, you know, pulling those together, again, some people are going to say, I just want to see the test data, and, you know, the outcome of how our kids are moving along on the continuum of being proficient is the movement that's currently going. And so that articulation and proficiencies is kind of in opposition to the, to, like, standardized test data, you know, where it's a sit, take a test, and get the result, right? What we know is, you know, in some correlations where there's achievement on, like the S-Back, we may have proficiency outcomes that are not making it, right? So that's, that's really our, you know, our calling, is to make sure that kids are moving through our system and are graduating with the skills that they need, and, in this particular area, academic proficiency, that they're able to go on successfully to their next steps.
The other piece I would say is, from the first year to the second year, we mostly bounced up. In the second year to the third year, we mostly, you know, bounced down, that's what it, it, it looks like. And so I really do think the fourth-year data in terms of the macro data, you know, will, will begin to tell. But, again, I, I want to emphasize, you know, that in terms of teaching and instruction, in terms of trying to improve universal instruction, that, you know, we really do look at the student level of the data. That's what the data walls do, that's what the data I was sharing with you, that we have a chart, like I said, for every sixth, seventh, and eighth grader, in terms of how they individually did on any one of these tests, and that's what the teachers really are looking at. The other piece, you know, which is not here, you know, and so, again, you know, we are also at the elementary schools, you know, moving to a much more response to intervention system, where we're really having targeted intervention for a number of kids this year, where we continually assess and try to, you know, make sure that kids who didn't get something are getting something. And the key in the end about a proficiency-based system, you know, the report card that we're talking about, the high school, as opposed to getting a C, is that if you're at a two, it really is our, our, we have to get you to a three. You know, we have to make sure that students are proficient. That is what the whole proficiency model that the state is, is putting forward. It's not like, oh, you can pass with a D minus, you know, which is the system that used to exist. Theoretically, a kid could graduate from our high school with a D minus average, and they passed, they get a diploma, but we certainly can't say they're ready for their next steps. And so we're moving away, you know, statewide from that system. Certainly, we've been trying to move away from that in South Burlington for a while. So proficiency system, one of the biggest conversations they're having at the high school right now, in terms of our own local assessment, is when a student has a two at the semester in a skill set that is their proficiency, how are we going to get them to a three? Either by the second semester, or to make sure that they then take a course that has that proficiency that they missed in it, you know. So we're doing a course inventory to make sure that that path is clear for a student who may not have gotten it the first time, without repeating the entire course, which, you know, could be one small part of a course, you know, that's the piece. So those are the discussions that are going on, you know, and it's a little complicated to try to put it down into a report, you know, because it's, it's an ongoing system. So trying to find snapshot places of evidence that at least shows you what we kind of look at, at the macro level, is what this report is about.
Thank you, Stuart.
And it's also why we're not complying.
I think we're gonna, Dave and I just went offline briefly, and I think because Martin isn't here tonight, too, we're going to move this and discuss it again, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
So I, I just want to let you know that I'll be returning from a conference on airplane, your next board meeting, so it'll have to be moved to the meeting after that, unless you want to discuss it without me here, which is fine with me as well.
No, but one, one of the observa, quick, final observation I'd make is, it's, it's either ironic or compelling to me, the messages that we're getting, kind of at the state level, around the investment in terms of Vermont spending on education, when we're looking at these levels of proficiencies here, and not knowing how that translates into how kids are prepared for their next step. Because, I mean, clearly, South Burlington relatively does a lot better than the state, but the state, the spending is on, on the state level.
Right. I mean, just, just, you know, on the, the ranking that is created by Vermont Digger, on a 99% ranking, you know, because nobody ever gets 100, you know, this last year, we were 9, 1, 3, which, you know, makes us, as a district, especially as a K-12 district, we're actually the second district of the state. There are districts ahead of us, but there are five, six districts, or seven, 12 districts, you know, so trying to compare apples to oranges. So Stowe did better than us. The next one down for a K-12 district, their score was .77 something, so.
Big drop.
It's, it's a big drop, so, you know, so if you look at their ranking and rating, and that's just on these S-Back tests, we're, we're doing quite well, because we're in the 90th percentile, so, the 99, the, yeah, the 90th percentile and up. So, that being said, is 57% gets you to the 90th percentile, is that good enough? And I think, long term, long term, I think that's really the question. It was the question under No Trial Left Behind, where 100% of the kids are supposed to be proficient. I think that's everybody's goal, how do we get there, you know, with not, with having high standards?
Thanks, Stuart.
Good, thank you.
Yes. You mentioned very briefly that you do have disaggregated data.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I can't remember what it was, SES, gender, disability.
Yes, and which we provide to the board in a different report, you know, just in terms of test results.
Seems to me that that would be one of the most important pieces of data that you should look at, is that disaggregated data.
Sure.
Because there are groups, there's sociological things happening that you should be looking at, I think.
Yeah, no, no, actually, the district is doing.
Where's that data? Where can we find that, the disaggregated?
It's actually, we're, we're just finishing the report card, you know, that will be posted online over the next few days, so it'll actually be on our website, and you can see that data also trending over time.
Oh, good.
And we, we do talk about it, as a board, in the disaggregated groups.
It's almost more important than anything else.
I don't disagree.
Thanks, Stuart. All right, we'll move on to set the agenda for the December 6 meeting.
So you, we're going to bring back.
We're going to bring that forward?
Yep.
I think we can take F6 and 8 off the policy review.
Yep.
Those are for readings.
Oh, they are for readings. Okay, that's right.
We got, we got one off, these would be for action.
Thanks, Delina.
And I, I wanted just, on the, the update on the pilot program to support trauma-affected students, that's what I referenced earlier, and that will be, again, I know the board's aware, but it will be the update on district efforts and current data on the trauma-informed schools and the Rick Marcoth pilot, and will be presented by Joanne Godak and our BCBA at Rick Marcoth.
Anything else that needs to be added or moved? All right. We'll move on to agenda item 14, future agenda items. Anything to be put on the list or deleted? Where do we stand on this non-union support staff employee manual?
Cost.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other comments, I'll move on to agenda item 15, consider the minutes of the October 18th and November 1st meeting. Any comments or changes to the October 18th minutes? All right, seeing none, those are approved, and November 1st?
The only question I had about November 1st was whether we needed to say that this was the meeting where we decided to change the date of the December 20 meeting to December 19? I know that we've changed that, but I didn't see it in the minutes anywhere, so if somebody was looking back through it, they might want to see that we had that discussion about the budget timeline and decided to leave that meeting.
So can we make that change? All right, would that change? Those are approved. All right. AP orders 16, 17, and 18, any questions for clarification? And we have agenda item 17, an AP order to Howard Center in the amount of $70,352.92.
Is that we approve the payment to Howard Center in the amount of $70,352.92?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.